Meeting of the Anaronda County Council is now in session. We'd ask that you please stand for the invocation, Councilwoman Fiedler.
I would like to welcome the Reverend Peter Mayer from St. Margaret's Episcopal Church in District 5. I am thrilled to have him here. He is my Reverend at my church.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler, and thank you all for serving. Dear God, Dios todo por los ojos, you have given us resources to steward and responsibility to govern. Send your Spirit of truth upon this council and this meeting. Give to us your wisdom to direct our thoughts, your love to direct our words, your compassion to help our understanding. Give us a will to serve not party nor partiality, but all of our citizens, that we may be a light of hope, liberty, equality, and goodness for all the world to see. Amen.
Amen.
Can we please have a Boy Scout troop, 804 from Millersville, come forward behind the dais over here?
I guess we're supposed to crowd around the microphone. Crowd around the microphone. What are you doing? This isn't crowding around the microphone.
Are you guys ready? You'll lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? Whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys, for helping us tonight. Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission is asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office Complex on Reva Road.
Okay. Invitation to the audience, we will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I'll ask the following people to come to the table and take a seat. You state your name and address. Let's see here, we have Ms. German, Ms. Frank, and Mr. Snow that sign up for invitation to the audience.
Thank you.
Ms. German, you have the floor. Name and address, please, in two minutes.
Yes, my name is Sandra German. I live at 310 Broadway Avenue, Glen Burnie, Maryland, 21061. And I just have a brief statement. Rudder's reports that illegal immigrants, as well as legal immigrants in this country less than five years generally are not eligible for Medicaid. However, they can get Medicaid for health emergencies such as children, pregnant women, families with dependent children, elderly, and the disabled. USA Today reports that illegal immigrants can get emergency care through Medicaid, the federal state program for the poor and the disabled. A RAN study concluded that the total federal cost of providing medical expenses for 78 percent of the illegal immigrants without health insurance coverage was 1.1 billion. That is billion with a B. The recognized process of immigration into this country is no longer questionable. Just walk across the border or take a dip in the Rio. You don't even have to dry off. You are now an American with intangible rights courtesy of our democratic representatives. From 1892 to 1954, Ellis Island was the gateway for over 12 million immigrants that entered this country legally. Almost 450,000 immigrants were processed during the first year. There was a process, and this process needs to be restored immediately. It is not a God-given right to benefit from the sacrifices made by those who built this country and live by the laws and the principles in which it was established upon. We ask most respectfully that you who sat before us tonight remember and honor our agenda based on our humanitarian rights. Our rights is provided by the constituents of the United States, and we request you defend those rights during your next four years.
Thank you, Ms. German. Thank you for sticking within time, too. Ms. Frank?
Hello, my name is Corinne Frank. I live at 8384 Lockwood Road in Pasadena. Again, I would like to ask the chamber, who here is not descended from an immigrant? We have two people, two people in this entire room. Most of the people, oh, four, okay. Four people. Most of the people here are immigrants or descended of immigrants. Most of us in this country are immigrants or descended from immigrants. Who here believes that immigrants are no longer welcome in our country? You don't believe that immigrants should be welcomed to our country?
Ms. Frank, can you just focus on the testimony?
Okay.
Thank you.
We are a nation of immigrants. Most of us are descendants from the huddled masses, and we welcome those looking for a newer, better life as an American. I am a member of the Republican Party, the party of Lincoln and of Reagan, and I do not support racism. I denounce it. I am from Pasadena, and I am not a racist. Racism has become the red scare of this generation, and cries of racist are tied to tried and true methods of ruining careers without any evidence to reinforce such a claim. This is the McCarthyism of the 21st century. This body recently passed a resolution-
Excuse me, do not make an interruption when somebody is presenting.
Thank you.
Okay, we want to give respect to everyone. Thank you. My apologies.
Thank you. This body recently passed a resolution recognizing a victim of true racism, and individuals crying racism at every turn is a desecration to the memory of that victim and many others. It is disgraceful that some members would stereotype an entire community as a sanctuary for white supremacy. The definition of bigotry is intolerance towards those who hold a different opinion from one's self. To have a different ideology is not to hate, and I would request that the members of this chamber keep that in mind tonight when referring to the other side and the oppositional ideas that come forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Mr. Snow?
Tori Snow, 1307 Beltrame Court. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I would like to publicly take responsibility for my conduct at the previous council meeting. It is my desire to be a voice that elevates the quality of dialogue in the county, not one that promotes rude and unprofessional conduct. After reviewing my comments, I reflected on my decision to speak over the chairman and concluded that my conduct was indeed inappropriate. I do publicly extend my apology to the chair for this behavior with a personal commitment to elevate my conduct and interactions in the future. I am frustrated with repeated efforts to characterize our political views as racist and uncaring. In the last meeting, I listened to several people make rude comments about good friends of mine, including the revolting assertion that Pasadena is a sanctuary city for white supremacists. Several people went so far as to gesture specifically at my dear friends whom I know have expressed the kindest care and concern for residents in our communities. Furthermore, I watched an arbitrary and overtly biased application of the chamber rules to specifically target my friends. In the heat of the moment, I chose to initiate a public protest with an intentional act of defiance. While many in my community have expressed appreciation to me for my act of defiance, I concluded that anger clouded my judgment as I bypassed several critical steps to conflict resolution, namely attempting to resolve our disagreement privately before escalating. Do not mistake this apology for a concession that I have anything less than complete contempt for the way the last meeting was conducted. I still hope the council considers my suggested revisions to the chamber rules. I also hope that the council acknowledges the bias of the previous meeting and considers offering an apology to my friends who testified amidst constant interruptions as outlined in my letter to each of you. I hope that this is a teachable moment for all of us, and I invite you to join me in self-reflection for ways that we can all contribute to elevating the quality of debate in Anaronda County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Is there any item, any council member, excuse me, the invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? Okay, seeing there's none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the revised minutes of September 4th, 2018, and the minutes of January 7th, 2019.
September 4th, 2018 revised. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Michael Peruca at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion to-
I have to read January.
Go ahead.
January 7th, 2019. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Pastor Paul Raden Hope Springs Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Great. Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the revised minutes of September 4th, 2018, and the minutes of January 7th, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No abstention. The motion carries. The revised minutes of September 4th, 2018, and the minutes of January 7th, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 319, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Transfer of Funds and Supplementary Appropriations. Bill Number 419, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Board of Education Transfer of Funds and Supplementary Appropriations. Bill Number 519, An Ordinance Concerning Licensing Food Service Facilities, Polystyrene Food Service Products.
Great. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 319, Resolution Approving Anaronda County's 2019 Financial Assurance Plan for Compliance with the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Phase 1 Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit.
Great. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving forward, Bill Number 9818. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9818.
Bill Number 9818, An Ordinance Concerning Energy Loan Revolving Fund Administration.
Okay, the administration, Mr. Barron, other folks.
Good evening, sir. If maybe everybody introduced themselves, that'd be good.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Pete Barron, the administration.
Christine Romans, Central Services Officer.
Don Ergo, Central Services.
Christine Nieder, Assistant County Attorney.
Good evening. Bill 9818 transfers the administration of projects financed by the Energy Loan Revolving Fund from the Anaronda Community Development Services to the Office of Central Services. There are quite a few county projects funded through this fund, and it makes sense to transfer administering them to the county department. Ms. Romans will answer any questions that you have.
Any council members have any questions regarding this bill? For the benefit of the public, we had a work session that discussed many of these bills, and that was going on, but if anybody has anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add, we have worked very closely with the Anaronda Community Development Services over the last many years on energy efficiency projects. They've been managing the county's strategic plan for energy efficiency, so this bill just is kind of a natural evolution of that for us to bring the management of the Energy Revolving Loan Fund into Central Services.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come testify on 9818? Okay, seeing no movement in the audience, we don't have anybody that spoke up. The public hearing on Bill Number 9818 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9818.
Bill Number 9818, An Ordinance Concerning Energy Loan Revolving Fund Administration.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay. All right. Please call the roll on Bill Number 9818.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Herr.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volke.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 9818 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9918.
Bill Number 9918, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Franklin Manor Shore Erosion Control District.
Okay, Mr. Barron.
Evening. 9918 provides authority for the county to allocate funds not appropriated from the previous fiscal year on the Franklin Manor Shore Erosion Control District, ending June 30th, 2019. Total funds being appropriated, $454,200. I have with me at the table Tomy and Lori, if you have any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay, very good. Now, we will hold a public hearing on 9818. Anybody in the audience, seeing no movement in the audience, we'll move forward. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9918.
Bill Number 9918, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Franklin Manor Shore Erosion Control District.
Okay, seeing there's no discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9918.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Herr.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volke. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 9918 is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 118.
Bill 118, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Franklin Manor Shore Erosion Control District.
Okay, seeing there's no discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9918.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Herr.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volke.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 9918 is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 118.
Bill 118, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District.
118 provides authority for the county to allocate funds not appropriated from the previous fiscal year on the Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District, ending June 30th, 2019. Total funds being appropriated are $11,215.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Pickard?
No.
Your mic was on.
Sorry.
Ms. Rodvian? No? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. We now have a public hearing on 118. Anybody come forward, would like to present? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing is closed on Bill 118. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 118.
Bill Number 118, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations, Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District.
Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 118.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Herr.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volke.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 118 is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 10118.
Bill Number 10118, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development Setbacks from Certain Roads.
Okay. Ms. Herr, this is your lead bill. I'm a co-sponsor, but if you'd like to make a few remarks, and then we'll have the admin say a few words.
Yes, thank you. Noise is measured in decibels. And from my research and understanding, very faint sounds, such as a whisper or rustling of leaves, may measure 20 decibels or so. Faint sounds, those are very faint. Faint sounds would include sort of normal household noises and range from 20 to 40 decibels. Moderate sounds, ranging from 40 to 60 decibels, can include human speech and daily office noises. Loud sounds from 60 to 80 decibels could include the sound of a diesel truck accelerating at the edge of a roadway. Sounds increase from there, with those sounds described as over 130 decibels as painful. Traffic noise is a common concern across the country, and Anaronda County is no different. In fact, the last general development plan identified noise reduction as a goal. Specifically, the policy identified in the last general development plan was to limit future residential and other noise-sensitive land uses in areas exposed to higher levels of noise. When this is not feasible, make sure that innovative technologies, I'm sorry, techniques are utilized to reduce noise impact to acceptable standards. To me, mitigating noise for residential developments is an important way to improve the quality of life for the residents who live there. This is particularly important to consider on roadways where there is significant commercial development or high-volume, high-speed traffic. Currently, our code has existing noise setbacks for residential development on a number of roads, including 97, Route 10, Route 32, Route 100, a few others. These roads each have current residential noise setbacks of at least 400 feet. Our code also allows for noise mitigation, so in that regard, a setback could be reduced or eliminated if the person developing the property performs a noise study and mitigates the noise level to below 66 decibels. I believe these setbacks for residential developments are sound policy in commercial corridors. I also believe having a mitigation method is an appropriate balance to any setback. Now, running right into Route 97, a road that currently has a setback of over 600 feet, I believe, is Route 3. And Route 3 has significant commercial development on either side of it, at least south of 97, and extended traffic noise continuously. Some of the intersections in that stretch sometimes receive failing grades on traffic study reports. The Maryland Department of Transportation considers Route 3 to be one of the most congested roads in the area. The 2017 traffic volume map for Anaronda County shows Route 3 with nearly 70,000 cars per day, more than Route 32. And again, Route 32 currently has a residential setback for noise of 450 feet. What's more, the October 21st, 2018 edition of the Capital Gazette notes a projection of 109,000 cars per day on Route 3 by 2035. And they've pulled those stats, I believe, also from the State Highway Administration. Because of the significant development along the road, the volume of traffic, and the merge onto 97, it's prudent to ensure that future residential development has adequate protections for noise so that persons who live along that road are not subjected to excessive noise levels. Therefore, I've introduced this bill with Mr. Pruski, adding a residential setback to Route 3 of 150 feet. I do note, however, that the current provisions in the bill for mitigation and waiver remain intact, which, as I mentioned, allows the setback to be reduced or eliminated depending on additional mitigation or noise testing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herr. Administration?
Well, first, let me introduce who joined me at the table. Once again, Pete Barron, the administration.
Lori Rhodes, I'm the Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer for-
Planning and zoning.
Phil Hager, Planning and Zoning Officer.
Greg Swain, Acting County Attorney.
As everybody here is aware, there have been some issues raised by the Office of Law. I anticipate, and I think in your packets, are some amendments. The administration strongly supports this bill with the amendments.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Great. Now, let's open this up for a public hearing. Bill 101 will now open this up for a public hearing, limited to two minutes. I do have a sign-in sheet, so we'll wait for the panel to exit here, stage left, and I will try not to butcher your names. Number one, Ms. Harris. Number two, Ms. Wannamaker. Three, Ms. Coven or Ms. Cover. Ms. Schaefer, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Diaso or Dibiasa. Again, my apologies, I'm trying to read the sheet that you signed in, if we could have those folks come forward. And whenever Ms. Harris is ready, state your name and address, and two minutes, please. Thank you.
My name is Evelyn Harris. I live at 1750 Albemarle Drive in Crofton. My home is probably a little more than 300 feet from Route 3 in Crofton, so it is twice the proposed 150-foot setback. Still, I cannot open my back window at night, no matter how lovely the prevailing breeze may be, due to the loud traffic noise. In recent years, as development has accelerated along the Route 3 quarter, the round-the-clock clamor of sirens has added to the deafening din. When the nursing home that is being built across the highway from my home is occupied, I expect the sirens to multiply. My husband and I have also noticed that our house shakes slightly from the tremors caused by heavy trucks on the highway. Although I believe that 150 feet is insufficient, it is a step in the right direction. I support the setback.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Ms. Wannamaker.
Hi, I'm Sharon Wannamaker. I live at 1635 Mount Erie Court in Crofton. I'm in full support of this bill, and thank Ms. Herr and Mr. Pruski for introducing it. My main concerns for this are safety, noise pollution, and environmental protection. So, under safety, new residential homes bring more children to the area, whether they live there or they're just visiting. There needs to be a safe distance from the highway and the development to keep children safe when playing outdoors. This safety concern also applies to pedestrians. The closer the housing is to the roadway, the greater the temptation to walk along the shoulder and cross the highway. You'll see this near Wall Chapel, further up on Route 3, pretty often. For noise pollution, as Evelyn said, you know, my take on this is, this is the suburbs. This is not an urban city. People leave the cities for more space and less noise. A setback would, of course, help reduce that noise. And for the environment, runoff increases with a new housing development, as does flooding when you add more impervious surfaces, causing the ground to be unable to absorb rain waters. Sure, there are drainage systems that the developers would have to put into place, but the fact still remains that further back from a main road, the easier it is to manage the storm water in any residential development. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name's Susan Coven. I live at 1435 Gerald Road in Crofton, Maryland. I am also with Crofton First, and we are here to support the grandfathering of the setback requirements. Where I live, I'm in the direct pathway of the Anaronda 7 Fire Department. So, with the increase with the infrastructure, there's more car crashes, we're hearing more sirens from first responders. With the increase of infrastructure and residential care, there's more pedestrians walking along Route 3, which unfortunately, we do see people illegally crossing Route 3, which has resulted in several fatalities, which, again, more sirens, more crashes, more accidents, and it's just becoming a very condensed area to reside in. So, while I do agree with Evelyn that 150 is just probably a mere requirement, it is a step in the right direction, so we do support the setback.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Schaefer.
Hi, my name is Carla Schaefer. I live at 2417 High T Court in Crofton. I'm also a Crofton First Board Member, and I'm testifying in support of adding a residential setback to Route 3. The character of Route 3 has changed very much over the past 10-plus years that I've lived in Crofton. The Route 3 corridor, as you all know, has become a hotspot for growth and development, and with that comes a lot of good things, such as our new high school. However, lack of safety shouldn't be the price of development. As we're running out of space, residential development is inching closer and closer to Route 3, and as a mom, I'm concerned for young families who would have children playing and waiting for the bus so close to Route 3 in some of these developments. According to the Maryland Center for Traffic Safety Analysis, in recent years, there's been an uptick in accidents and fatalities, including those involving pedestrians along Route 3, and this bill would help to combat that trend from continuing to escalate. As the traffic along Route 3 has increased, so has the accompanying noise. Noise pollution negatively impacts the quality of life for residents and has the potential to impact property values as well. Despite being along the Route 3 corridor, Crofton still has this feel of a tight-knit community. We're very close, and we'd all like to see that kept intact so that our children can play safely outside and our neighbors can be outside with one another without yelling over one another. A setback of 150 feet from Route 3 would provide more of a noise and safety buffer for both existing residents and those who have not yet joined our community. And for the aforementioned reasons, I'd like to once again encourage you to pass this bill proposed by Mr. Pruski and Ms. Herr. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I don't know if I have anything to add, though. So, my name's Robert Ian Smith. I have 1487 in Crofton, Maryland. I'm also on the Board of Crofton First. As my other fellow Board Members have mentioned, this is kind of a very needed thing for, especially, the reason why we are here as a group, as a smart growth group, is, you know, obviously, you know, we're always constantly monitoring these things, and as Carla mentioned, Crofton has had traditionally a very strong residential feeling to it, but we're doing, we do see a lot of growth in our area. And so, for, basically, for the safety issue, for, let me put backup real quick, but it[1725.36] is very important because we do see, it's still a desirable place to live, but we're still seeing a lot of traffic. We're seeing a lot of increased density of folks wanting to come there, so it's really important to have this in place, even if it is a very, in our estimation, of a modest setback of 100 feet. It's necessary. Like, noise is very important because I probably, my residence is probably within maybe 300, 400 feet of Route 3, and I can tell you, like, 2:00 in the morning, I can constantly hear air brakes going off. It's easily, and as you know, it's like the Crofton Raceway is there, and I can tell you, with the building of the Wall Chapel South, taking out that nice forested buffer there, that that noise has significantly increased, no fault because the Crofton Raceway was there before, but taking, you know, the increased residential, the increased development in the area has increased in the noise. And if anybody has traveled Route 3, you'll also see that it's, it is a little unique that we don't, we have a lot of four, a two- to three-lane highway. There's, we do have a significant amount of heavy truck traffic along Route 3 with dump trucks and a lot of heavy, a lot of dump truck traffic there. So, yeah, I definitely thank you for introducing this bill, and so.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. D'Aso.
My name is Robert D'Aso. I'm a professional planner and a professional engineer. I want you to know that all zoning and development regulations are really measures on some way of providing quality to our habitat. So, in the case of this 150-foot setback from Maryland 3, the planner and designer is put on notice that the residential development is affected by noise. It's almost a penalty. Does this mean that you start a plan drawing 150-foot setback? Hardly not. If that were the case, the new apartment building that is built next to TNT Diner will be set back 560 feet from Route 50. No. What the planner does is go to Part B. First, you conduct a noise study, and I've done this in multiple counties, and it tells you what buildings are affected by noise. And with that, you can adjust the buildings, you can create a BERM, take defensive measures, and eliminate that setback. But what you have done is you've taken into account noise. And actually, in my opinion, there will be noise studies done along all highways for all multifamily development, not only Route 3. Now, the traffic has increased in Route 3 dramatically, so much so that it's going to be under construction in the future. So, building close to the highway is just going to mean, when they widen that highway, it's even going to get worse. What we do as planners is we create communities that are going to be there for 50 years. 50 years. So, we can't make any mistakes with regard to noise or environment. Prince George's County, Anarundel County, Howard County.
Please summarize.
I would argue that this is really consumer legislation, and you ought to pass it as-is and look at the county as a whole for noise legislation.
Thank you to this panel. Is there anyone else that'd like to testify on this bill? Please come forward at this time. Okay. Seeing no more movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 10118 is now closed. We do have amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
I'm going to read the bill in for vote first.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yep.
Bill Number 10118, An ordinance concerning subdivision and development setbacks from certain roads.
Okay. Amendment One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment adds a grandfathering provision to prohibit the new setback requirements from applying to certain subdivision and site development applications filed before January 1, 2019.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Okay. Ms. Pickard, would you like to discuss anything on this amendment? This is your amendment.
Sure. As my colleagues will recall, we had a discussion regarding this bill at our legislative workshop, and I had a list of questions for the Office of Law, which I didn't need to even ask because the Office of Law brought those concerns to our attention before I brought them. I should go to law school. I have some concerns with a couple aspects. One, we've created, this law creates a setback without actually doing a, requiring any sort of noise study. The seven highways that are in the current code have setbacks because of data from a study. So, that's one issue. But possibly, if I could defer to Mr. Swain regarding the concern with projects currently in the pipeline that are at the approval process and have gone through planning and were essentially changing the rules, it's, could constitute a taking, a partial taking, and lead this, leave us in legal jeopardy with the county. Did I get that right?
Greg Swain, Acting County Attorney. That's correct. The way the bill was drafted, it would apply to projects in review process now. So, the purpose, what the amendment will accomplish, it will grandfather those projects. So, any project that filed an application for sketch plan, preliminary plan, final plan, site development plan, or a grading or building permit associated with a site development plan would be, before January 1st of 2019, would remain subject to the old law that existed prior to Bill 10118. So, it does resolve that concern.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? The Administration, do you want to state your stance on this amendment, or what you said before?
Yeah, what we, sorry. Yeah, our position remains the same. We understand the concern expressed, and we strongly support this bill with these amendments.
Okay. Seeing there's no further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Fiedler, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Just to the point about the potential for litigation against the county for a partial taking, worst-case scenario, and I know we're talking about four projects, what is the fiscal impact, worst-case scenario, if you had to ballpark?
It's difficult to say. From discussions with the Office of Planning and Zoning, in one project alone, just referring to one of those projects, which is at the final plan stage now, I believe, the imposition of the setback would probably reduce the number of dwelling units by half. So, the fiscal if, and there's a lot of ifs involved in this equation, but if there were a partial taking claim, and that taking claim was successful, the damages that could be sought would be the value of what was lost. Half of the dwelling units, I think it was maybe 100, something along those lines, would be the measurement.
So, hundreds of thousands, if not million?
Probably higher than, yeah.
Okay.
Probably in the millions.
Millions?
Yes.
For that project?
Yes.
Just that project?
Just that one.
But there's three more that could be in question.
Could be impacted, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Yeah. As we are on the heels of the general development planning process and our smart, and our small area plans, and therefore then going into comprehensive rezoning, looking at noise mitigation and how that affects our quality of life is something we can be doing in a more comprehensive, holistic way that could bring about good policy. I don't feel this bill as written has taken several things into consideration, and although we're speaking just to this amendment, I'll leave my comments at just this one amendment before I go on to other issues with the bill.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Hare?
Just one quick question. Mr. Swain, does the permissive language in Part B alleviate your concerns at all to the fact that those 100 dwelling units, you know, provided there is some mitigation or noise study, may not actually be affected?
Well, the permissive, the permissive language and the mitigation provisions in Part B address, well, they do provide some relief. Now, the concern is not so much with what this amendment addresses, it's what the Second Amendment addresses, which is the underlying basis for the setback in the first place. The original legislation that led to the previous setbacks were all based on SHA noise studies that determined there were levels of noise that were too high and that relief was required. The 150-foot setback that's an issue here is not based on that type of noise study. So, the underlying basis for the legislation was a question. I think the Second Amendment addresses that, but I think, and the Second Amendment also incorporates those mitigation provisions in subsection B, so I think that goes a long way.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. This amendment has been properly moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Nay.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Okay. We have Amendment Number Two. Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendment Number Two?
Amendment Number Two. This amendment adds certain requirements to determine when to impose the setback requirements for residential development properties along Maryland Route 3.
Is there a motion to adopt? Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Very good. Is there any discussion? I'll just, you know, as stated earlier, this is my amendment. This adds the requirements for the setbacks in terms of allowing the noise study that we discussed and the measurement. We talked about it in the work session. I don't want to repeat. I know the Administration supports it as well. I don't know if you want to add anything, Mr. Barron?
Just, I'll say this. To the folks that came to the table after our initial panel, the Administration shares those concerns and will be looking to work hard to make sure we address all of them beyond just this bill, but this specific amendment, we are, we are supportive of.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sir? No? All right. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number Two?
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Okay. Bill Number 10118, as amended, will be heard at the next meeting, February 4th. Okay. Moving along. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4518.
Resolution Number 4518, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a Grant Under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, Fiscal Year 2018 Local Solicitation and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant.
Mr. Barron?
Let me introduce the folks at the table. Mr. Tyler?
Hamilton Tyler, Deputy County Attorney.
Stephen Thru, Budget Office.
Tim Altamore, Chief of Police.
4518 is required, is a resolution that we are, that we need to move forward on the grant. This grant provides $165,069 that is administered by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. The CJCC seeks to break the criminal justice cycle through treatment, family intervention programs. This is primarily accomplished through the adult drug court programs and community conference program. This grant provides salaries for various key people in the program and requires no matching funds from the county.
Great. Any questions from the Council? Again, we did discuss this at the work session. Okay. We're going to open this up for a public hearing. Anyone like to make comments or come up and testify for Resolution Number 4518? All right. Seeing that there's no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 4518 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 4518.
Resolution Number 4518, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a Grant Under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, Fiscal Year 2018 Local Solicitation and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 4518.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 4518 is adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Resolution Number 119 and Resolution Number 219.
Resolution Number 119, Resolution Requesting the County Executive to Enter Into an Agreement with the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement on behalf of Anarundel County to perform certain immigration enforcement functions pursuant to Section 287-G of the Immigration and Nationality Act. Resolution Number 219, Resolution Urging the County Executive Not to Use Funds Received by Anarundel County from the Federal Government pursuant to an intergovernmental service agreement for the legal representation of county detainees in civil proceedings instituted by the Department of Homeland Security and pledging not to approve any related budgetary requests.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Both these resolutions are sponsored by Councilman Volkey. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologies in advance. I came down with a stomach bug yesterday. Anybody who has children realizes when they go to daycare that sometimes they become full of germs, and so that happens. So, I will do my best to stick through the hearing and hear what everyone has to say, but if I have to step out for a moment, it's for personal comfort, so I apologize. With respect to these two resolutions, I have talked pretty extensively about 119 and the basis why I believe that the 287-G program makes sense for our county. I discussed that at the work session, as well as in our opinion editorial that was published in the Capitol. I just want to talk about briefly some new information that I've received since the last time that we had a hearing on this issue. So, with respect to the 69 individuals who were found to be in the country without lawful status under this program in the past, in the year that that program was in effect, I just want to note, because I think we hear the term crime of violence sometimes, and I'm not sure what that necessarily means to people, but I will tell you specifically what those crimes were. There were a variety of second-degree assaults, first-degree assaults, burglaries, child abuse. There was a murder charge, sex offense, rapes, carjacking, disorderly conduct. On top of that, that is not including, as a crime of violence, DUIs or DWIs, of which there were a number of others. With respect to the number of detainers that were placed by ICE, 69 detainers were placed by ICE under this program, so each of these individuals who was identified, a detainer was placed. I can tell you, since my meeting on Thursday of last week with the detention center, since the program ceased on the 4th of December, there have been 13 individuals identified as foreign-born, and only three of them have had a detainer placed. I can also share that it's my understanding that ICE has not been in the jail since December 4th to interview anyone under the Criminal Alien Program. I did have a chance to speak pretty extensively with two of the detention immigration officers out of the 12 that we trained in this county. I also had an opportunity to speak with the records clerk there in the detention center. Councilwoman Hare joined me on that. And during the course of those discussions, we were able to understand how this program is working. There's an interview sheet that each individual who comes into the jail is provided. That interview sheet asks a question about place of birth, and that is the trigger specifically that would allow under the Criminal Alien Program for a notification to ICE. And then there is this form, which is fax to ICE, which specifies basically the basis of why ICE is being notified. With that, after talking with the records clerk, it's my understanding that although they work as quickly as they can, and this is in no way to cast aspersions on that department, oftentimes, it can be a few hours, if not many hours, if not even the next day, before sometimes these Criminal Alien Program notifications are sent to ICE. And I have here a letter from Sheriff Fredericks supporting the 287-G program. He sent this to all the members of the Council, and based on his 26 years of law enforcement experience with the Anarundel County Police Department, he served in a number of capacities there, but he was the commander of the Organized Crime Section. He headed up the first MS-13 task force in the county. And one of the things he noted in here is, "I cannot cite a single example of any community member who did not report criminal activity to the police because the county participated in 287-G. The fact remains that there are certain members of the public who will not contact the police for help for a host of reasons." He continues on, and he says, "I can assure you that during my years working in local, state, and federal law enforcement, neither I nor anyone around me have asked a victim or witness of a crime their immigration status." He also noted, when he was leading the MS-13 task force, that not once did any of the victims voice a concern about the 287-G program. So, I think that that goes directly to some of the statements that have been made that suggest that this program makes us less safe because it erodes trust between the community and our law enforcement officers, who, as I've said on multiple occasions, Chief Altamore and his department have done a phenomenal job trying to bridge that gap and educate the community, and I think they are to be applauded for that. He also notes, Sheriff Frederick does, that there are, in fact, cracks, and similar to what I identified with respect to the Criminal Alien Program, he notes that when someone is flagged, if you will, a regional ICE officer is contacted, that regional ICE officer must then verify the status of any detainer and determine if a person is subject to deportation. It's often a lengthy process, and as we learned when Councilwoman Hare and I were at the jail, there are plenty of scenarios where individuals are aware that they have a relatively brief window to sort of get out of the detention center, and if they're able to do that, then they will not be detected by ICE. That was something that the detention- That was something that the detention immigration officers made us aware of. I would also note that an individual who has been held in the detention center, at least according to Sheriff Fredericks, they would have already been charged with a crime, arrested, and had an initial appearance before a court officer to determine if probable cause existed for the arrest. So it's not as though people are being rounded up or asked for their papers or in some shape or form being shoved into jail under a pretense to be able to then determine their immigration status. As he concludes, this is another tool in the toolbox for, he noted, law enforcement, but as I've continued to say, this has never been a law enforcement program. That's what the chief has made clear. This is a public safety program, and that's why I believe it's important. I also want to point out that of the 69 individuals who were here in the country without lawful status, 22 of them were what's known as EWI, Entry Without Inspection. 18 were PWA, which is Present Without Admission. 11 were reentry after removal. The vast majority of the individuals detected in this program were not people who would likely have been triggered by the Secure Communities Program because the fingerprinting data would not have been there for individuals who were not, in fact, actually fingerprinted by any sort of homeland security personnel upon their entry into the country. There were a number who were visa overstayers, and there were a few others who had already been notified that they needed to leave the country and who were detected through this program. So I do believe that this is a very important piece of our public safety in the community. I think that this certainly advances public safety. That's the reason I've moved forward with this. I also just want to say one thing. I had the chance to go to the forum that County Executive Pittman hosted, and in that forum, an individual said something about a man I see here, and that's Mr. Freeman. And that individual noted that he didn't look like he was a veteran. I just can't, in harsh enough terms, express my absolute disgust with that kind of statement and condemnation for that level of discourse in our community. So with that, I understand that everybody here feels strongly, and I understand that terms like racism and xenophobia and bigotry have been thrown around relatively carelessly in this debate. But I would ask that everybody who is here, try to remember that we're talking about policy, and we certainly are talking about people, and I think the paper noted that appropriately. But the people are not just the folks who were identified under the 287-G program. They're also the people of this community. Those are the people that I and the others on this council have been elected to represent and who we, through our efforts, are charged with attempting to keep safe as much as possible. So with that, I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Mr. Barron, administration?
Sure. The administration opposes this resolution. Mr. Volkey, I also have a young child, so I appreciate what you are going through right now.
Thank you.
And really, you're a champ for sticking this out. I would be in bed curled up.
I was for the past day.
First, let me introduce who's here on the panel with me.
Mr. Martin?
My name is Bill Martin. I'm the acting superintendent for the Department of Detention Facilities.
And Hamilton Tyler, Deputy County Attorney.
Stephen Trew, Budget Office.
Tim Altamore, the Chief, please.
So as Mr. Volkey did reference, we did have, Mr. Pittman did host two town halls. There's no doubt that this, I'm sorry, let me lean forward. There's no doubt that this issue has brought forward a lot of discussion, a lot of rhetoric, and a lot of emotion. Frankly, we're at a point in our country where people aren't talking to each other. In the District of Columbia, just a few miles down the road, our federal government is shut down, in part because of this issue, immigration as a whole. What I did see Mr. Pittman do, and frankly, was something that made me very proud to work for him, is he listened to everybody who came. I saw some of the angriest people, who were very, very upset about this issue, come forward and shake his hand afterwards for him having, taking the time, Mr. Martin and the chief as well, to listen to their concerns and hear them. Because, Mr. Volkey, you're right. This is about policy. But this has also inflamed a lot of emotion. An out-of-county organization released Mr. Pittman's cellphone number, and we got voicemails that questioned whether he was an American and told him to go back to Mexico. That's not what Anaronda County is about. That is not the intent of this resolution. But I cannot say in the strongest possible ways that this administration opposes this resolution. Let's talk about what 287-G is and some of the rhetoric that came forward. We are not, what 287-G does not do, does not make Anaronda County a sanctuary county. There are only two other counties in the state that have the 287-G program. Other counties that do not include Carroll, Calvert, Allegheny. The question here is, who does the work of immigration enforcement? Our administration, and the gentleman sitting next to me will explain further, we will still continue to cooperate with the Criminal Alien Program and Secure Communities. There was a former senior ICE official at the, at one of the town halls who said that we were right on, that this program doesn't help keep us safe. You saw an op-ed in the Capitol by Senator Will Smith, a former Director of Homeland Security Advisory Council, who said that this is the right move for public safety. And you also saw the Capitol Editorial Board, who once praised the previous administration for taking on this program, reversing course, and after looking at the facts, saying that the administration made the right decision. You have all seen the report that Mr. Pittman and the administration put out. There's been a lot of discussion on this, and I think there's probably some questions that we want to have, and I just would point you all to the report that the administration put forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Martin.
Mr. Chairman and members of the county council. Mr. Chairman, if I may make a preliminary comment so as to first correct the record from our council work session of last week. I had indicated that no one had ever visited the Ordnance Road Correctional Center. I stand corrected. Councilwoman Fiedler visited pre-election and spent time with us and took a tour. Even though it was pre-election, I'm going to count it, otherwise I have no one. Thank you, Councilwoman Fiedler. Since our work session of last week, both Councilmen Volkey and Councilwoman Hare did visit the Jennifer Road Detention Center. As I understand it, conducted some interviews. We do appreciate that. And furthermore, Councilwoman Pickard also visited the Jennifer Road Detention Center, spoke with us, and took the full tour. As you can see, Mr. Chairman, we turned everyone back safely. Just an observation, not a complaint. Over the past few weeks, I have been working harder on a terminated program than on existing ones. Obviously, Mr. Volkey has as well. I anticipate it's out of his passion for 287-G. This item has received a lot of attention: press conferences, radio interviews, North County Town Hall meetings, South County Town Hall meetings, and council work sessions, and now council hearing. I'm not going to go toe-to-toe with Mr. Volkey. He has interviewed X number of individuals and has been told this. I've interviewed and talked to a lot of individuals and have been told that, and there are a number of similarities and a number of differences. But I'll briefly walk you through the two programs and do the comparisons. The Criminal Alien Program existed in Anaronda County for 14 years. The 287-G Program existed in Anaronda County for one year. The Criminal Alien Program is utilized in all but two Maryland counties. The 287-G Program is only in two Maryland counties, and it's only in 78 counties out of 3,005 nationwide. The Criminal Alien Program utilizes four pieces of information: jail booking information, jail database information, live scan fingerprint information, and booking records with identifiers. The 287-G Program utilizes jail booking information, jail database information, live scan fingerprint information, and booking records with identifiers. They utilize the same mechanics and the same process. The difference? The Criminal Alien Program is a federal program. It's immigration work performed by federal ICE agents. The 287-G Program, a federal program, the immigration work is performed by correctional As you can see, the only real difference is that correctional officers under 287-G were doing the work of ICE federal agents. That's it. I have 45 correctional officer vacancies, and yet there was another added duty, responsibility, and potential liability to a staff that is currently working at least one overtime shift per six-day cycle, and oftentimes, two overtime shifts per cycle. When these men and women walk into the Jennifer Road Detention Center, they are assuming the care, custody, and control of 500 inmates. Keep in mind, the Jennifer Road Detention Center is a maximum custody facility. They have enough to do. It is not our job to catch illegal immigrants. It is not our job to be deputized ICE agents. Now, as you know, the Department of Homeland Security, ICE, sent a short, terse letter to the county executive terminating the detainee program at the Ordnance Road Correctional Center, referred to as the IGSA. Now, as I understand it, when the 287-G program was terminated, there was not much of a reaction. Actually, there was a cordial conversation and, I think, a meeting as well. Only two jurisdictions in Maryland currently participate in the 287-G program. I believe Mr. Volkey had indicated there's a third one that's coming on. I believe it's Cecil County. Now, in as far as the 78 of 3,005 subdivisions that participate in that program. But when the county executive made a noble gesture to use a fraction of the monies from the detainee program to provide legal representation for the detainees, ICE became upset that, as it was told to me, their monies were going for legal representation when they are in the business of deportation. Why wait three weeks if it was due to the termination of the 287-G program? And then almost immediately on the heels of suggesting utilizing some monies for legal representation, the termination notice of the IGSA program is received. I am skeptical that it was due to withdrawing from the 287-G program, and I wonder how many other jurisdictions hold detainees that do not participate in the 287-G program. I know of two in Maryland: Worcester County and Howard County. I spoke to the director at Howard County. He indicated to me he's been approached numerous times to take up the 287-G program, and he has declined. Yet they still hold detainees. This past Friday, there were 103 detainees held at the Ordnance Road Correctional Center. 57 lived in Maryland. Again, these are low custody detainees, no criminal history, no gang member association, no serious mental health or physical health. But I just want to go back now to a minute as ICE referred to their monies. When the citizens of our county are supportive or critical as to how monies are spent, they have the right to be so, for it is their money. These monies that ICE refers to as their monies were earned by Anaronda County employees, and the Department of Homeland Security does not have the authority to control how we spend them. And this is exactly what they were doing by having terminated the IGSA program. That was their way of controlling, now we have no monies from them, to spend. So they have terminated this program because they do not like how their monies are going to be spent and not due to the folding of the 287-G program. So now we look with a resolution to reward that behavior by passing a resolution, calling for the reinstatement of the 287-G program, and do their work for them? Well, that would certainly be turning the other cheek. ICE wants deportation without representation. Again, I refer to the county executive as a noble gesture to use a fraction of the monies for representation. If there are soft spots in how ICE runs the Criminal Alien Program, then we need to address them. We need to see the deficiencies. It does not mean we do their work for them. If we have an employee who is deficient in the performance of their job, I do not step in and do their work. I work on a corrective action plan with them. My goodness, if we start absorbing the work of other entities because we do not feel they're up to par, we'll never achieve our county mission. If Mr. Volkey would like to put into writing these concerns and deficiencies, I'd be happy to go with him to the Department of Homeland Security, so to speak, as his second chair, and support the call for improvement. Now, I realize that Mr. Volkey and Councilwoman Hare talked to some of my correctional officers who really liked the program and really supported it. They enjoyed doing ICE's work. While it may have broken the monotony of the day-to-day business of care, custody, and control, I can relate to that. Forty-nine years I have spent in corrections, the past 22 here in my home county as warden of the Ordnance Road Correctional Center. What I've enjoyed most in my career is talking to inmates. But these days, time is short, and I do not get that time to do what I enjoy. If I took that time, I'd miss preparing for the 287-G meetings. I'm not sure how they arrived at the conclusion that doing the work of an ICE agent did not jeopardize their primary mission of care, custody, and control. Carving anywhere from 30 minutes to three hours to six hours out of an eight-hour shift certainly has an impact. I wonder how many additional overtime shifts that created due to the 45 vacancies. Now, I recognize and I appreciate their can-do attitude. It is typical of their dedication and professionalism, but it stretches just too far. I have not been able to find any information, any study, any research, that the 14 years the Career Alien Program was operating in this county has been unsuccessful. I have not seen anything that represents that 287-G provides better security regarding undocumented individuals. I have found that ICE supports the 287-G program. Why wouldn't they? They're getting someone else to do the work for them. I'd like to find someone to clean my house for free or fix my car. The federal government has a federal pre-trial service program. Anaronda County has an Anaronda County Pre-Trial Services Program. Should we start doing their work for them here in the county? Well, obviously, no. Now, I know there are numerous cooperative entities with the federal government, particularly in law enforcement, but these are cooperatives, not a work dump. The Department of Detention Facilities, we got it wrong. We attempted to fix something that wasn't broken. We have now returned to what has been successful for 14 years, the Criminal Alien Program, and the work is again being done by the right people, federal ICE agents. The 287 road was the wrong road to travel, the assumption of duties that are to be performed by the federal government. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other testimony from the administration?
If you have anything to add, but I think, I don't think I could have said it better than Mr. Martin.
Okay. All right. Questions from the council members? Ms. Fiedler?
Mr. Martin, you stated that there's no indication that 287-G has made our county any safer. But during our work session, it was confirmed that we don't have the capabilities of collecting data to confirm that one way or the other. Is that correct?
I have found no data one way or the other. That's correct. The only part that I have is the history of the CAP program, the Criminal Alien Program, and during a 14-year period of time, I did not see anything derogatory. I never read anything derogatory. It seemed as though the program was doing well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hare?
Mr. Martin, thank you for your comments. When I visited the detention center last week and spoke with a few people, it's my understanding that there were 13 people who have been in the detention center who were arrested and charged with a crime since the 287-G program was ended. Is that your understanding as well?
It may be. I don't have that. I don't have that information.
Okay. You indicated just now, I believe, that the Criminal Alien Program is sufficient, and it's working on its own. Is that an accurate portrayal of what you stated?
I have seen no evidence to the contrary of that.
Okay. It's my understanding that of the 13 people who self-identified as foreign-born, those 13 people, ICE was notified of those 13 people. ICE did not interview a single person. And in some instances, according to the people I spoke to, including the records clerk, in at least some cases, it is because the individuals who came in were released on bail, personal recognizance, or otherwise prior to the time that ICE was notified or that ICE could get there to conduct the interview. So I understand that there are interviews not happening under the Criminal Alien Program that would otherwise happen under the 287G program. Do you have any response to that?
That doesn't mean that the whole picture is being missed by any means, because I indicated the same processes are being utilized with the jail databases and such. But also keeping in mind, 92% of the individuals that are arrested who go to the Jennifer Road Detention Center go there on a no-bond status. So they're not going anywhere. Eight percent could make bond, and how that whittles down, I'm not sure. But just because a correctional officer did not interview, and just because an ICE officer did not interview, that doesn't mean that the live scan wasn't checked by ICE. It doesn't mean that the other pieces that go into play for the CAP program, as well as the 287G program, weren't in place either.
But my question is still, there are 13 people who would have been interviewed under the 287G program who were not interviewed under the CAP. Is that accurate?
Interviewed by a person? I mean, the booking people would do the interviews and do the intake, so there would be that level of interview.
But there was no interview under the CAP, which, there was no further screening under the CAP which would have happened under the 287G program?
I mean, if you're saying that ICE didn't send down an agent, then I take they didn't send down an agent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions before we open the public area? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Martin, thank you for your comments and your accommodation last week to get us into the facility to be able to talk with those individuals.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to ask you, because you noted this, and it was something I had talked to the ICE agents about too. Are you aware if anybody is working overtime because of the 287G program?
Somebody is working overtime all the time because of the number of vacancies. Can I give you the exact hours of that nature? No. But if I have one person that's working overtime, and I had a correctional officer that was spending six or eight hours on a 287G, maybe I wouldn't have needed that overtime if that individual wasn't doing the 287G.
Okay. And Ms. Smith, the county auditor, she had gotten some information from, I'm going to say his name wrong, but Mr. Borjese?
You got it.
Did I say it right? I told him I would try not to mess it up. And he noted that it takes about three hours for each of these interviews. So if I do quick math, 193 times three hours, these 193 people, that's 579 hours that were spent on this program. If I take those 12 detention officers and multiply it by a standard 2,000-hour year, that's about 24,000 hours. Comes out to about 2.4% of their time that they're spending on this program. Is that about your understanding of how much time they were spending on this?
Well, you're a lot better at math than I am, sir.
Well, I have a calculator, sir.
Is that what the numbers come out to? I mean, that's the only response that I have.
Well, I laid them out, so if somebody in the audience gets my math wrong, they'll come tell me, I'm sure. All right. And I would also just ask Ms. Smith, you had prepared a blue note on this, and you and I had discussed with respect to the cost that you'd come up with for the 287G program. Can you share what the costs are with everyone here?
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, too. When we calculate the cost, it is by multiplying the intake, the 193 people times three hours times who took the intake. It doesn't factor in overtime or anything like that. And it's not like this time, this is based on a cost based on their salaries, under the assumption that if they weren't working on 287G, they could be doing something else. These are salaries that would be paid regardless. But it's just the fact, we factor in that cost because it's the cost of those services. If that, I don't know if that, does that clarify?
Yeah, I just was, I wanted maybe for you to explain the training cost that the county paid on the front end, and then just clarify. You did exactly what I was hoping you would do, but...
Okay. And then the training piece is based on the fact that they sent 12 people down for four weeks, and those people's salary and cost for that training. So again, if they didn't send them on training, it's not like they wouldn't pay them for those four weeks, but that's the cost of having them there as opposed to doing something else. That makes...
Am I allowed to share what the cost is from the blue note?
Yeah, you can. It should be public, but I can share it. So the cost for the training was $94,490, and the cost of the salaries and benefits of the employees while performing that estimate of three hours on average is $27,115.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And so the number that you got, the $27,000 number, that's assuming that it's taking away from their other jobs. So if the detention officer said it's not taken away from that job, would that be a fair number to include for the cost of the program?
So I guess my understanding from Mr. Borjese was that if they weren't doing that, they would be doing other field operations, but...
May I address that briefly?
Please, absolutely.
I think that's an excellent point. There is always something to do in a jail. There are 500 inmates in a jail, and there's always movement. There's always inventory that needs to be done. There's always inmates that are going to medical or going, say, to visiting. There's standards that have to be adhered to. So something's not going to be done by them putting their time and effort, because there's perpetual movement in a jail.
Thank you. Chief Altamari, I had a question for you. I wasn't aware of this, but when I went to the jail, what I understood is that the fingerprinting is done by the Anarundel County Police Office on the arrest. It's not actually done at the jail. Fingerprinting at the jail is only done after someone has been put there on more or less a permanent detention. Am I right on that?
For now. So when we transfer to central booking, all booking essential functions will occur at the jail as a part of intake. For now, the live scan fingerprinting that occurs, which is the fully automated system that shotguns information to the federal government, occurs with the police department.
Okay. So the police, in effect, are participating with secure communities?
I would say as a lesser included subset of the communication with the federal government.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Pickard?
I just wanted to, going back to the report from the county executive and the numbers presented from the detention center, I understand that, and correct me if I'm wrong, about 7,000 individuals went through being charged with a crime and finding themselves at Jennifer Road last year.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
So we've spent a lot of time and energy and public discourse talking about these final 34. When my children watched that press conference, my very smart sixth grader did some math. What we're not talking about today is 6,810 USA-born individuals charged with a crime that are finding their way to Jennifer Road. Does those numbers add up to everybody? Okay, we're spending a lot of time on the final 34 of the 190, and just to tout my sixth grader again, the percentages are really low. What do we know? We know our public safety sector is woefully understaffed. We've heard it today from Mr. Martin about 45 vacancies. We know the police department. We know our firefighters and our 911 service are struggling. When we talk public safety, I would like us to be talking about all 7,000 of those individuals that found our way to Jennifer Road. And I don't know much about the 6,800, but I sure do know a lot after tonight about the 34. And I think it's something we should all keep in mind. It's probably not the, I didn't ask a question, but I had to say it. Henry Pickard is very smart.
Okay. Seeing no more questions.
Sorry, just one more question.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Lacy, go ahead.
I'm slow hitting the button. Ms. Smith, did you calculate or try to account for the additional cost for the four weeks that the 12 employees are being trained? And they're away from here, then presumably with the shortage of staffing at the detention center, there has to be a lot more overtime for the employees who remain during that training period. Could you account for that additional cost as well?
So $94,490 is for their time spent down there as opposed to being here, but trying to figure out if that caused overtime or not? No.
Okay. And Mr. Martin, would you be able to provide any further information on that?
I would anticipate it did cause overtime. Taking 12 individuals out of the detention center with that number of vacancies already would result in overtime, but I can't tell you how much that would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The training takes place how many times throughout the year?
One time. The initial training is, I believe, for four weeks, and then there's refresher training for one week the following year.
Has the refresher, or had the refresher course been done? It had not, correct?
No, has not.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
It's one week every second year.
Every second year?
Yeah, according to...
I stand corrected. Okay. All right. Seeing no more lights. We're now going to open the joint public hearing on Resolutions Number 119 and Resolution 219. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do want to remind everybody to state your name and address, and I will bang the gavel if you interrupt someone, regardless of what side you're on. We want to make sure we get everybody in. The last I counted was 52 people. If you do want to speak and get to the point, that would be very helpful, because obviously there's some folks waiting, but we're going to call up six at a time and allow your voice to be heard. So here we go. Bruce Bellofetania, I'm trying to do the best I can. Valentine, okay. Sheriff Jeff Gaylor, Yvonne Chester, Gail Walter, Tim Grooms, and Penny Moore. If you would all come forward, please. And once you get seated, we'll start with Bruce. If you state your name and address, and then we'll move to the next six. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Bruce Valentine. I live at 1709 Fox Great Plains in Annapolis, Maryland. And I'd like to thank the chairman and the council for providing the opportunity to address the subject. And as Ms. Frank mentioned, probably everybody in this room is here as a result of some immigrants coming to the United States. So there's no need for anybody to cover that. My parents came over and went through the port of entry, my grandparents did. And so, and with the United States being the country that imports or lets more immigrants in than any other United States, I think we can agree that most people are in favor of immigrants, if done through our approved system. So that's another subject I think is kind of non-debatable. I was here two weeks ago, and I think the chairman did a very good job of trying to control the audience, if you will, as things went on, and try to have an appropriate behavior. And I would say that it would be inappropriate for people to either have signs, or have outbursts, or excessive applause, or have unnatural arm motions, or standing and blocking the view of people that are behind them in the audience. I'd just ask that good behavior continue for today. I'd like to thank Representative Volkey for doing the research, a great deal of effort to gather information, provide it, and provide a forum at this time for people to discuss both sides of the issue. I think the statistics that have been provided demonstrate that 287 has been proven effective, and I think you'll hear more about that from some of the additional speakers. And so I'd like to express...
Please summarize, sir.
I'd like to express support for the Resolution 119 and Resolution 219. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Galen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Harford County Sheriff Jeff Gaylor, 45 North Main Street, Bel Air, Maryland. Here today in support of Councilman Volkey's resolution on the 287G program. As the sheriff of Harford County, I answer directly to the citizens of my county on matters of public safety, as responsibility for policing and corrections both fall under my office. With actual public safety at the forefront of our efforts, I was very pleased to have our jurisdiction accepted into the 287G program by President Obama's administration in 2016. Under the 287G program, local correctional officers working under ICE supervision when performing program-related duties work to identify those individuals who are in the country illegally and who are booked into our detention center. This program that crosses, does not, this is not a program that crosses over into law enforcement functions either in my office or anywhere where it exists. The program, although initially having a law enforcement aspect to it when it was first established, was modified in 2009, also by President Obama's administration, to be corrections-based only. The law enforcement relationship and marketing against the program is just one example that is used to attack the program, in my opinion, unfairly. As sheriff, again, responsibility for keeping our Harford County community safe, I strongly support the truths of the 287G program, and that is that it is an effective public safety tool. Over my first term as sheriff, I was pleased to announce that crime had fallen each year, and I credit this to our complete public safety plan, which is inclusive of the 287G partnership. Preventing criminals from returning to the community they have already victimized certainly reduces crime, and knowing this fact was my public safety goal when first joining the program. I fear that with Anarundel County eliminating this important federal partnership...
If you could summarize, Sheriff, please.
It will send the wrong message to our local jurisdictions, our area, and that when someone's committing a crime in Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Anarundel County, or if they view this as a sanctuary jurisdiction, it affects Harford County as well. And I did want to address that I heard through two jurisdictions many times. Of course, it's Frederick and Harford County, and Cecil, I believe Councilman Volkey has confirmed, is Cecil that's coming online.
Thank you. Yvonne?
Okay. I'm Gail Walker, Coachway, Annapolis. I have been a legal alien, and I'm now a naturalized citizen. One of the first things I'd like to make as distinction is the illegal as opposed to the legal community of aliens and refugees. So often, it all gets lumped together, and we're really talking about two distinct group of people. I really feel that by not supporting ICE and their program, we are promoting in this community and enabling a lawless section. For those who have already broken the law once, because entering illegally is breaking the law, we are now permitting them to continue and take no responsibility for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Penny Moore from 2027, oh, sorry.
One second, Mr. Volkey. They're just going along the panel. They're going to, yeah. Go ahead. Can you state your name again?
Yes. Penny Moore from 2027, Huntwood Drive in Gambrels, Maryland. I'd like to note that the purpose of the 287G agreement, when it was first enacted, were to help the, this law came about after 9/11, in order to act on, deputize immigration officers to act on behalf of ICE in order to better respond to terrorists. However, this program has been come to be utilized for tracking down immigrants committing federal crimes, specifically here in Anarundel County. And here, this 287G program has been used to racially profile immigrant-looking people. This has created fear in the community of both legal and illegal immigrants. According to the Capitol, just under half of the 287G arrests in this county have been due to minor offenses. As has been reported by many others, this program entrenches an ideology of racism and serves to suppress... serves to suppress reporting of violent crimes by the immigrant community. Since the law was enacted, Annapolis has had only one act of terrorism, and that was the lethal act on the journalists at the Capitol. There is not strong evidence that the 287G program has made our county safer, or has had the effect of reducing terrorism, as was the primary goal. There have been programs that Anarundel County has put in place, such as the increased emphasis on community policing, and the strategic targeted investment in gangs, and the gang task force that do appear to be making our community safer. I do not support this environment of fear mongering against the immigrant community as a whole. I do support County Executive Pittman's decision to rescind the 287G program, and I also support his decision to continue to strengthen our policing and public safety programs in general. Thank you.
Yeah, we skipped over Ms. Yvonne Chester. Is that okay? Then we'll go to Mr. Grooms.
Good evening. My name is Lieutenant Yvonne Chester, and I'm with the Harford County Sheriff's Office. I'm assigned to the Harford County Detention Center. I'm the watch commander for our facility's intake and release unit, as well as our 287G program. I'm also a designated immigration officer through ICE. And I wanted to share a quick story with you that, one that you wouldn't hear or see about on the local news. Reference a gentleman that we had that came in on a felony theft charge. He came in in February of 2017, when we just first started our program, on an 18-month sentence. He is, was born abroad, born in Germany. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is he is a Anarundel County resident. He is homeless. He was living in the Anarundel, I believe it's called House of Hope, in Glenburne. So this man came, come through, and since he was born in Germany, we had, you know, the ICE unit was notified because he was born abroad. So I started interviewing him, and he assured me that he was a U.S. citizen. However, he didn't have any type of credentials to verify who he was. He had no driver's license. He didn't have anything. So getting through the story, because I only have two minutes, what myself and an ICE agent or ICE officer that, supervisor that works with us from our detention center, we had to try to figure out if this man was a citizen or not. And it turned out that indeed he was.
Can you please summarize, ma'am? Thank you.
I'll try.
Okay.
That he was a citizen of the United States. But what happened was he was brought in to the United States under a different name. And he had come over and was adopted, and his name changed. So what we did as part of the 287G program, this is not something that we have to do, but this is something that I felt that we should do morally, was to help this man. So what we did was we contacted, I believe it's called the United States — not certification. God, I'm lost now. Hold on. What is it?
No credentials.
Okay, all right, yeah. Sorry about that. Anyway, we contacted the Citizenship and Immigration Services and was able to get his recertification certificate for him for free. And he is now able to go to the NVA. He's now able to get an ID. He's able to get an apartment. He's able to open up a bank account.
Okay, thank you. I have to move on because we have 52 people. I see where you're going. I appreciate your testimony. Thank you again for coming. Mr. Grooms?
Hi, Tim Grooms from 411 Willow Bend Drive, Glenburne, Maryland. I'm here, I am for reinstating the 287G program. With the removal of the 287G, we are left with the Criminal Alien Program, where law enforcement agencies provide ICE with a list of detainees held in their jails and allow ICE access, either physical or video, to interview detainees of interest. The cooperation sought from law enforcement agencies under this program focuses on powers that the LEAs already have as part of their law enforcement authority. Next, we have in place Secure Communities Program, which was reenacted January 25, 2017, is in effect in all USA jurisdictions, Washington DC and five U.S. territories, where law enforcement agencies are asked to detain immigrants of interest beyond their usual release date to allow ICE more time to pick them up and place them in removal proceedings. Again, LEAs are being asked to use their pre-existing criminal law powers to assist ICE with immigration law enforcement. Finally, 287G agreement allows new powers to immigration enforcement that was not previously possessed. A standard agreement like we had here in Anarundel County gave the power to interrogate detainees about their immigration status, process detainees for immigration violations, prepare evidence for immigrant processing, preparing charging documents, issuing requests for detainees and release information, and transporting the immigrant to ICE detention facilities. This was limited to the detention center and after immigrants had been arrested for other reasons. Again, this was limited to the detention center and after immigrants had been arrested for other reasons. The big difference, and there appear to be many between Secure Communities and 287G, is through Secure Communities, the LEAs can decide themselves whether and to what extent they want to honor immigration detainees and inform ICE of immigrants' release dates. This is where the idea of sanctuary comes in, is contemporary sanctuaries basically places that adhere to a "don't ask, don't enforce, and don't tell" policy. It is stated in the County Executive Pittman Information Paper from December 28, 27, 2018, "Members of the Latino community fear ICE and avoid interacting with police with fear of family and friends being deported." And this has to do with 287G. Well, the ACLU —
Please summarize.
Yep. The ACLU, the Secure Communities Program, also drives a wedge between local law enforcement and communities they serve, deterring witnesses and victims from reporting crimes and undermining community partnerships with everyone, and keep everyone from crime. So this is basically saying, no matter what is in place, the communities are not going to talk because of their fear of deportation. Finally, with limited power at local government level to fight criminal illegal immigration, 287G is a great program to help fight the criminal element of any illegal alien that is arrested and has committed a violent crime.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this panel is dismissed. Just real quick while I'm calling up the next panel, I hear side conversations on the side. If you could keep that to a limit, I'd appreciate it because folks are trying to listen along with the council members, so I just want to say that. We do want to allow everybody to be heard, but just please make sure you recognize that. Next panel, Patrick Fleeharty and White, Stephanie Er, Amy Britt, Ms. Bauer, it looks like Kate Bauer, and Kathy Lerner Beckett. So if those folks would come forward. I'm sorry?
Excuse me. I don't know how to press this button. He did not call my name, but I have a colleague here who's waiting on a bus, and he really wants to testify, and I'm wondering if he could be seated in this panel so that he can testify.
I have to go by the list in terms of who signed up, unfortunately. You know, the way it is, but what we —
Going on point.
Yeah. What we can do is if he has written testimony, that'd be helpful.
Well, I have available, I scheduled a line for 9:30. Who's Kathy? And they haven't given it back.
No, I understand, sir, but I have to go by the list of what's signed up. That's our rules. Yeah. Patrick, if you would start, please.
He called you Kathy.
Oh, I know. Can I get him?
No, not by our rules. Sorry. Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
My name is Patrick Fleeharty. I live at 105 Victor Parkway in Annapolis. I oppose Resolution I-19. I believe it was a good decision to withdraw from the 287G agreement with ICE because, one, it is not necessary for public safety. The information to determine if an arrested individual is wanted for a felony can already be determined by the information that is shared through the Criminal Alien and Secure Communities programs. And, two, it is counterproductive. The county police chief has worked strenuously over the past year and a half to convince the community that the police are not in collaboration with ICE despite the perception created by the jail's 287G agreement. That perception has caused Hispanic-Latino residents to be fearful and hesitant to come forward to report crimes and threats of violence, information that would be helpful to fight criminals and gangs in their communities. The chief has stated, "The fear is very real, and my own experience as a volunteer with the Annapolis Immigration Justice Network and Anarundel Connecting Together affirms this. I have worked directly with members of the Latino community and can attest that the fear is palpable and all-pervading. Withdrawing from 287G is a good first step in allaying some of that fear." I also oppose 219. I have met refugees who have been tortured, had their homes firebombed, and their relatives raped and killed. They had to flee their homes, their communities, and their cultures, often with only the clothes on their backs. As they apply for asylum, they need to have legal representation in order to tell their stories to the courts. I believe that a portion of the profits made from their incarceration should be used to provide some of that legal assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. White?
My name is Ann White. I live 1913 Martins Cove Court in Annapolis. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the county council for this opportunity to speak. My remarks concern procedure and accountability. I am concerned with the abrupt manner that a program known as 287G, that for all intents and purposes was working as intended and was ended early by an employee without council input or discussion. The only report on the impact canceling this program would have on the community came well after the program was terminated. Mr. Pittman made the termination of the 287G program a campaign issue and pledged to end it in his inauguration speech, but no termination later was sent until well over three weeks later, when, after staff had suspended their screening work and database equipment was removed from the detention facility. As council members, I ask you to hold the newly-elected county executive accountable for this action, taking any action alone without input from the county, from the county council and citizens. Now we are allowed to speak only after this hasty decision was made. I fully support Councilman Volkey's resolutions to reinstate this program. At the last council session, a number of people spoke out about immigration and spoke to their own stories. This issue is not about immigration. It is about illegal immigrants and illegal immigrants who are criminals versus keeping our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Er. Or, thank you.
My name is Stephanie Orr. I live at 3302 Shore Drive in Annapolis, Maryland. Thank you. I'm here representing the Maryland Wise Women's Immigration Huddle. We'd like to express our support for County Executive Stuart Pittman's decision to end the 287G program in Anarundel County. I would like to correct the false narrative being expressed by the supporters of 287G that ending the program will result in the release of violent criminals into our communities. As previously documented by the County Executive's Office, convicted violent criminals, whether undocumented or not, are incarcerated, not released. ICE already uses its access to databases on convicted violent criminals even without the 287G agreement. These criminals are then detained and deported by ICE. 287G violates the fundamental American legal principle of innocent until proven guilty, since undocumented detainees are reported to ICE before they have been convicted of a crime. The 287G program was promoted by Steve Schue as a crime-fighting tool, but in fact, it's had the opposite effect. When it comes to community policing, the police need cooperation and help from the communities they serve, and for this, their most valuable asset is trust. But 287G breaks down that trust by creating a climate of fear and suspicion that makes cooperation impossible, which is why Anarundel County Police Chief Tim Altmaire supports the elimination of 287G, a program that's made our immigrant communities and our county less safe.
Thank you. Ms. Britt?
My name is Amy Britt, and I live at 600 River Birch Court in Odenton. I would like to start by stating clearly that I support the county executive's decision to terminate the 287G program. However, my dislike of the program is not my biggest issue with the resolutions being discussed tonight. This is the second time in five months that I have been here in a very full room to discuss a pointless and divisive resolution. People complain about wasteful government, yet here we are, spending time and resources to fight about the county executive eliminating a program even though this council has no control over the decision. I have heard Councilman Volkey's claim that the people haven't had a say in this. I would remind him that, as you said, the county executive campaigned on the promise to end the 287G program. I believe Mr. Schue made a lot of hay out of that as well, but Mr. Pittman won. The people have had their say at the ballot box. So I ask you, what does this accomplish? This fighting and this spectacle, this stoking of hate? Why continue to create this empty political theater? What does it achieve to have all of us at each other's throats arguing about something neither we nor you can change? I ask you to think hard about that as you look at the people sitting next to you. None of the gentlemen who were previously involved with inappropriate resolutions on the council won their election or hold any office currently. They are gone. Anarundel County residents are watching, and we are keeping track. Please, make your next move something that will bring this county together and move us forward, rather than trying to pit us against each other again.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer.
My name is Kate Bauer, and I live at 5109 Holly Drive in West River. I'm here representing a coalition called Focus on the County, which was formerly known as Flip the County, and I speak in opposition to Councilman Volkey's resolutions. In a country increasingly divided by social and political issues, the discussion of immigration has become an opportunity for some to express racism rather than a starting point for a rational dialogue about border security. Anarundel County is not exempt from this unfortunate trend, but terrorizing our foreign-born residents and their families through 287G is the least effective way of keeping them and us safe. Fear mongering to promote an agenda is wrong. That said, I would echo what Amy has said. Why is the county council even taking up this discussion? The decision to implement or reject 287G and the Ordinance Road contract are the accountability of the county exec, not the county council. The people of this county want representatives who focus on the county's business, and they want representatives who don't waste the county's council's limited time with meaningless grand gestures. I encourage this council to foster a civil, open, humane approach to governing. And if you take this approach, I guarantee you, we stand ready to help you succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lerner Beckett?
Hi. My name is Kathy Lerner Beckett, and I live at 1025 Sexton Court in Heritage Harbor in Annapolis. Most of the points that I was going to make today have been made several times, so I will briefly just reiterate that we are paying, we are short 40, approximately 40 detention vacancies, and this redundant program takes staff away from their county law enforcement duties. Everyone that is arrested is fingerprinted with live scans. That information goes to ICE through the Secure Communities Program, and those fingerprints are checked against immigration databases where ICE can determine immigration status and take action as needed. Therefore, the 287G program is both redundant and can interfere with the law enforcement efforts in Anarundel County. Both our chief of police and our superintendent of detention facilities have stated repeatedly that ending this program will not endanger the safety of Anarundel County residents. In fact, Police Chief Altmaire has stated that his staff could do a better job without the 287G program. Not participating in 287G will not, as some say, make Anarundel County a sanctuary county because we do cooperate with ICE, and we allow them to interview detainees and to take them into custody as needed after any applicable sentence is served. So if 287G does not help keep us safe and actually costs us staff and resources, why would we keep it? I also want to remind you, as others have, that County Executive Pittman and several of you campaigned, your campaigns included support for the elimination of the 287G program, and you won. The majority of Anarundel County voters have already spoken. Please vote no on this resolution.
All right, thank you, this panel. You're dismissed. I'm going to call the next six. Ms. Dawn Marino, David Bond, Nancy Harrison, Harry Freeman, Renee Cantor, and William Again, I don't want you to trip coming up here, but if you could move quickly, we want to make sure everybody gets their time in to speak. to make sure everybody gets their time in to speak. We're good. Okay, Ms. Marino, if you would start, name and address.
My name is Dawn Marino. I'm here to testify as an individual. 287G is a federal program that was enacted in 1996. There are 15,338 local police and sheriff's offices in the United States. Out of those, in 2011, at its height, there were only 72 localities that participated in 287G. As of 2017, there are only 37 localities still participating in 287G. So it's gone down, not up. People have realized it's not a program that works. What do the 15,301 localities know that the other 37 localities do not know? 287G does not make communities safer. All 287G does is identify potential illegal immigrants. That's it. What is the downside of identifying illegal immigrants? They will not trust the police. They will not report crime when they are the victims of crime. They will not assist police when they witness a crime. The federal government already has the means to identify illegal immigrants that have been arrested. The federal program just uses local detention officers to do their work for them. There is no economic benefit to the county. There is no safety benefit to the county. Nationally, law enforcement has been opposed to 287G. Locally, law enforcement has been opposed to 287G.
Can you please summarize, ma'am?
I am also opposed to 287G.
Thank you for summarizing. Mr. David Bond?
Yeah. David Bond, Glenburnie, Glenburnie, Maryland, District 2. I encourage the County Council to reinstate the 287G program, as requested in Resolution 119 and 219, which allows the Anarundel County trained detention officers to work with the federal government's ICE department. These detention officers, from their training and the use of live scan print, are then able to interview suspected illegal aliens. This interviewing, questioning, is done at a county detention center after they have been arrested for an alleged criminal act. The interview does not take place on the streets, not in their homes, not at their workplaces. It's done after they commit a crime, allegedly. The 287G program was in place for about a year. During that time, 193 immigrants detained for committing a crime were interviewed by Anarundel County ICE-trained detention officers. 69 of those were found to be in the United States illegally, 32 of which were charged with a violent crime. If the 287G program was not in place at that time, several of those could have slipped through the cracks. Working with ICE authorities also allows Anarundel County to hold detainees at the Ordnance Road Detention Center, which nets, after training and other expenses, almost $4 million in revenue annually. I furthermore request that the County Council agrees to not use any fund for legal representation to these detainees. I would strongly suggest that the council use some of those funds to fill the gaps and needs for detention and police officers. As a lifetime resident of Anarundel County, I respectfully and prayerfully ask that this council do what is best for Anarundel County citizens and restate 287G. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Nancy Harrison. I reside at 242 Poe Court. That's in Saffron Park. Ms. Fiedler, I am one of your constituents. It's been about 18 months, I think, since I was here previously to talk about the effects of 287G throughout the country. As Ms. Marino and others have noted, there have been a number of jurisdictions throughout the country that have left this program because of the costs and various other things. At that time, I reviewed the costs to a number of jurisdictions throughout the country, including Prince William County, Virginia, to which 287G contributed to the collapse of the housing industry after the 2008 recession. It cost the county millions and millions of dollars to recover from the effects of The adoption of 287G by the previous administration was one of the drivers that caused a lot of people in this county, a lot of citizens, to get out, get moving, and get out the vote. A lot of you are here because of that. You're here because we did not want 287G, and we did not like the fact that the previous administration had imposed it on the county. As has been noted, we were here then to tell the council what we wanted, even though the council has only an advisory capacity if the executive will listen, and we're here again because someone has introduced a resolution, which really, you can't force the executive to do what this resolution wants, what this resolution proposes. I am against reimposing 287G on our county, and I am against the resolution that prohibits use of available funds to assist detainees with representation. They need representation in order for their cases to be adequately heard, and without it, that's just wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Harry Freeman, 679 Powhatan Beach, Pasadena. It's been said this evening that 287G is a public safety program, not a law enforcement program. According to ICE's official website, they say, one, this program authorizes the Director of ICE to enter into agreements with state and local law enforcement agencies permitting designated officers to perform immigration law enforcement functions, allows a state or local law enforcement entity to enter into partnership with ICE under a joint MOA in order to receive delegated authority for immigration enforcement within their jurisdictions. Third, ICE has trained and certified more than 1,514 state and local officers to enforce immigration law. To me, this sounds like a law enforcement program. It's also been mentioned that DIOs interviewed say that this program works. If this program works, why has this program been opposed by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the Major Cities Chiefs Association, the Law Enforcement Immigration Task Force, the ACLU, the American Immigration Council, the Southern Center for Human Rights, 22 other counties in Maryland, and many other organizations and local governments across the country? My next bet goes to everyone in the room, council and audience members and those viewing. When we work on collecting information to measure the weight of a particular matter, the people interviewed and the research conducted is enormously important. If the people that you are listening to aren't randomly selected from a population, then their opinions hold little weight from the perspective of testifying what your facts are compared to what the facts are, because if you don't know who you're dealing with, you may have a biased sample in which your data becomes sullied. After hearing from our county executive, our Chief of Police, and our Superintendent of Corrections, after hearing personal opinions from concerned citizens, my presence in testimony this evening is to show support for the decision made by the county executive. Since I have 15 seconds left, I do want to thank Mr. Volkey for personally condemning the behavior that was at the Glenburnie Town Hall. I hope everyone here this evening focuses on what's important, as many have discussed before me, and please, when you do research, make sure it is as unbiased as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Fiedler?
Mr. Freeman?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I too want to echo the sentiments of my colleague. I do not support any kind of language or anger towards anyone. You look like you could be my neighbor. You look very much like a veteran, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And to all who share that sentiment, thank you as well.
Thank you. Ms. Cantor?
My name's Renee Cantore, and I live at 105 Eastern Avenue. There are many reasons why I'm against reinstating 287G and why I was against it when it was first implemented by our previous county executive. But I have only two minutes, so I will keep my comments brief. In short, according to both our new county executive, Stuart Pittman, and our Chief of Police, Tim Altamari, who was appointed by our previous county executive, the program has cost Anarundel County taxpayers money without reducing crime. Both officials also believe that the termination of the 287G program will not increase crime and that it places immigration enforcement back in the hands of the federal government, where that authority should reside.
Thank you. And Mr. DeSousald?
Yes, my name is William DeSousald. I live at 400 Richland Road in Glenburnie, Maryland, 21061. By the way, Ms. Pickard, I'm one of your residents. I've come here to testify in opposition of the 287G program. The reason why I oppose it, it is not in the purview of the County Council and a waste of time and taxpayer dollars on an issue that council has no authority to address. The resolution is asking the county taxpayers to pay for screening detainees for their immigrant status. As I, as a taxpayer, I am paying for this work. I already paid federal taxes to pay this same work, so I am now paying twice. This is duplicate and inefficient. This resolution implies that participating and not participating in 287G program is leaving residents unsafe. This is not true. I support County Executive Pittman's decision not to participate in the 287G, and I urge a vote, a vote, no vote on I-19. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Call the next six. Ms. Debbie Jason, Rebecca Forte, Carol Brown, Delegate Heather Bagnall, Sandy German, and David Zawald. And while those folks are coming up, I want to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones, because it does interrupt people's testimony. I'll remind it like when I was a teacher. We may accidentally make a call to China. It's going to be very expensive. So make sure you silence your cell phones. Thank you. Ms. Jason? Okay. Please proceed.
Debbie Jason, I live in Pasadena. Mr. Volkey is familiar with me by now. So Resolution 219, I'm not real sure why that's still being talked about. ICE had a hissy fit, took their toys, went home. Onto 287G. I support Mr. Pittman's position. The police chief supports Mr. Pittman's position. The Superintendent of Detention supports Mr. Pittman's position. I trust that they know more about what they're talking about, considering it's their job, than the people up here do, quite frankly. The chief has had many conversations with immigrant community and has learned that there is actually a chill effect when it comes to 287G, that they are afraid when they, you know, see the county becoming involved in deporting people, they are afraid to come forward and talk about, you know, being victims of crime or seeing crimes. They're afraid to go to the police. That is a problem. That is what we need to consider a much larger problem than, you know, taking over the job that belongs to the federal government. You know, that should not be something the county is doing at all. If you have a problem with the way that ICE is doing their job, with the way the feds are doing their job, take it up with them. You know, don't put it on the people in this county to do their job for them. If you're concerned about, you know, people, criminals being let out on the street, take that up with the justice system, you know? 287G should not exist in our county. It is not the job of the people in this county. Also, I just want to say Sheriff Fredericks ran for election on an anti-immigrant platform. I don't trust anything he has to say about immigrants or 287G. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Forte?
Dear members of the County Council, we have testified about overdevelopment and issues with developers not respecting county interests. We've spoken about cell towers being built near our schools, how our teachers, firefighters, and police officers are being underpaid, and what we can do to better protect our local watersheds. However, in the past few years, multiple resolutions were proposed by County Council members who wanted to have opinions about the federal government. They were not elected to the federal government, nor were they contacting their federal representatives as citizens like us are taught to do. Instead, these men have abused their power and wasted county time and resources proposing irrelevant resolutions, instead of developing legislation that will actually benefit the county and protect us from overdevelopment. I am thrilled that those men were unseated, and before us now sit many new women who pledge to focus county time and resources on schools, roads. I learned today how far communities should be from roads, like, who pledge to focus on the county. Mr. Volkey, I know that you cannot help that you are not a woman, but you can choose how you govern. Please prioritize the needs of this county over federal grandstanding. And also, I want to point out, in terms of keeping violent offenders out of our communities, the biggest indicator is domestic violence. So if you want to look to keeping violent offenders out of our communities, look to domestic violence. And that actually, in terms of chilling effect, if a woman is domestically abused and if she is here illegally, that is two reasons she might not go to the police now. So keep that in mind in terms of, like, any color, any born-here citizen, citizen who is naturalized, whatever the case may be, keep that in mind, because that is the actual indicator of dangerous people.
Thank you. Ms. Carol Brown?
Thank you very much. My name is Carol Brown. I live at 563 Deep Creek View in Annapolis. I want to thank the council for giving us this opportunity to address you and give you our views. I am a former federal prosecutor and also a former Assistant District Attorney from Manhattan, so I've dealt with immigration problems and also street crime. And I think that law enforcement, what I look to, to law enforcement, not only as a former prosecutor, but also as a citizen, is trust. And I think that this program, I mean, I appreciate the costs, but I think the cost to our community and divisiveness is huge. We want our law enforcement officers to build trust, not fear, and we have to ground our decision-making and governing on facts and the truth. And I think unfortunately, we, in our country, have been led by lies from the highest in our land, and those lies form the basis for unjust policies, and especially in the area of immigration, where we start to equate ipso facto immigration with public safety. Immigration may or may not involve public safety. Most of the time, it does not. It's a question of numbers. It's a question of families, a lot of questions, but it's not public safety. So when you start talking about immigration and public safety, that's a cover, to say, oh, it's public safety, therefore, we can abuse rights, civil rights, et cetera, et cetera. I think that we want to consider, when people complain about immigrants breaking the law, well, the President of the United States breaks the law every single day. He is not allowing individuals to apply for asylum under the laws of our country. He is one of the biggest lawbreakers we've ever seen in my life. Also, persons are protected under our Constitution, not just citizens.
Please, I'm right.
I oppose the 287G program, and I thank Stuart Pittman for his leadership in this area. Thank you. I also want to say immigrants add to our community. They pay taxes, they buy things, they rent houses. We need them.
Thank you. Ms. Bagnall?
I'm Heather Bagnall. I live in Arnold, Maryland, and I'm your most recent delegate, which is why I almost didn't come tonight to testify, because I was told actually this morning to stay in my lane. But I realized this is my lane, because I'm a resident of this county, and I also know this is my lane, because as elected representatives, our words have weight. The county executive also knows his lane, which is why he was so transparent in this whole process. He campaigned on ending the 287G program. He spoke with multiple departments. He spoke with multiple leaders and organizations before he made that decision. It was not an arbitrary one. It was not an arbitrary one. Law enforcement also know their lane, as do our judges and our legal system and our circuit courts. Now, I understand that, that Councilmember Volkey feels that this is a safety issue. But I would point out that when you talked about detainees that were, that were released on bond or that were released on their own recognizance, that they actually did go through a legal process, and law enforcement made the decision to, to put them before a judge. A judge made the decision to put them out on bond. So, so there is a process already in place, and I just feel that it is cynical as elected officials that we continue to perpetuate misinformation because our words have weight and people make decisions based on the things that we say. And so tonight, we have to take time away from our families, from our friends. There are people who are on furlough, who are not even earning an income, who have to be here tonight. So what message does it send to our community when we are wasting their time? I look forward to my opportunity to work with the county in the future and moving the county forward. And I just wanted to also address the fact that I'm concerned about the language in 219 because we are in, even though it's an obsolete bill or obsolete resolution, we're in a fluid situation.
Please summarize.
And I'm concerned about pledging to not approve any regulated budgetary requests without knowing what that actually might mean in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. German?
Hi, my name is Sandra German. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm here as the president of the Greater Fernglen Community Association. I am here to present testimony on behalf of many associations, communities, and neighborhoods. We are in support of Mr. Vol and the 287 program. Whatever safety we need to do should become first priority. The 1% that we have just heard since the program ended, there were some that have slipped through and have, do you want to be the one responsible for that one that got through? That murdered someone in your family, your neighbor's family? I think it's very important. I also am totally against the money helping illegals. The process of legal immigration is not opposed, but it must be legal and it must be maintained as such. And before we hand out benefits to illegal immigrants, I will remind you, charity begins at home. We in Anarundel County will consider the needs of illegal immigrants when and only when the needs of an estimated 39,471 homeless veterans are met, when they are sheltered, when they are fed, and when their medical needs are covered. Then we go back to the issue, they've broken the law twice. They're in jail, they've broken the law clearly, first time coming in to, to our country illegally and then by ending up behind bars. We get public defenders, we pay for lawyers, they should, they should have the same, they should not get any special requirements. And if the funding is there with CASA and CARE, then let them be the ones responsible to help them and not put the burden and take the money from Anarundel County.
Thank you. Mr. Zawald?
Good evening. David Zawald, 263 Bowline Road, Severna Park. I'm speaking in favor of the 287G program. At his inaugural address, the county executive promised to kiss the program goodbye and then write a report. The statement indicates he'd already made up his mind and that facts don't matter. His rash statement prompted the manager of the detention center to stop the program the very next day. He also stated that funds from the Intergovernmental Service Agreement would be used as legal defense for detainees and admitted that he didn't know how much this would cost. So Mr. Pittman's first act was to propose payments to illegal citizens from hard-earned taxpayers' funds. I ask, whatever happened to the stated priorities of the police, fire, and teachers' salaries? At his public hearing on January 14th, Mr. Pittman purposely omitted the most important aspect of 287G, which is an interview of the detainee. Mr. Volkey spoke about this tonight. He claimed that without 287G, ICE would do the same thing as already being done, but this is not so. Why? Because live scan fingerprints don't always tell the whole story. The detention officers are trained to determine the detainee's full status with an interview, and we've had evidence of that tonight. This is appropriate and good for the safety of the citizens. Why did Mr. Pittman purposely omit a key fact? Because he already made up his mind. One can't help to wonder if we have a payoff scenario playing out here. Such an attitude demonstrated by county leadership is dangerous, and yes, it creates a psychological sanctuary county situation. If only one violent crime occurs by someone who should have been detained, it will be a tragedy of the highest order that could have been avoided. We cannot count on Stuart Pittman to work for our safety, hold him accountable, and reinstate the 287G program. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed.
Mr. Volkey? Your map is wrong.
Brady Sensenbrauch?
Ms. Forte?
Robert Jones? It's, we can't throw the dice.
He asked you to tell him that his map is wrong.
That's okay. Mr. Patrick Enright? Daniel Roland Lindell? Richard Otten? And Paula Peters?
Good evening, councilmembers. I attended the last council meeting with the intention of leaving with a better understanding of the 287G program and how my fellow residents felt about it. Unfortunately, I left disappointed. I was discouraged to hear the animosity and the, and the division in the voices of my fellow residents. I heard individuals from both sides use divisive rhetoric to get their point across. Ladies and gentlemen, it is no mystery that we live in a divisive time in our country's history. We constantly use labels to determine our personal opinion of one another. This fact is so hard for me to grasp. During my time in, in the United States Marine Corps, I served with a diverse group of individuals. We all came from unique backgrounds, but yet we all got along and had a sense of unity. I challenge my fellow residents of this great county to drop the labels and pick up the conversations. Labels are a cancer. Let's drop this Republican and Democrat label and actually get to know one another deeper than party affiliation. Let's have respectful, respectful debates on hard issues, but let's listen to one another to learn why one holds a particular view on an issue. Once we converse with an open mind, you will quickly realize how similar we truly are. Let's listen and learn from one another. By doing so, we will help make Anarundel County an example for other communities to follow. In memory of the great Dr. King, I want to leave you with some of his wise words to think about during and after tonight's meeting. He once said, "People fail to get along because they fear each other. They fear each other because they don't know each other. They don't know each other because they have not communicated with each other." Ladies and gentlemen, let's get to know each other.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Hi, my name is Robert Jones. I live at 1128, oh, thank you, 1128 Commander's Way South in Cape St. Clair. And I have just recently happily paid my property tax, and so I appreciate it to the county council for this opportunity to tell you how I want my money spent. Do not spend it on having county employees do the work of the federal government. I do not want any of my money in any way have anything to do with Trump and his war on immigration. Now, I'm also here to represent my Latino family. Thirty-one years ago, I married a Peruvian woman, and here, there she is, happy. And I have now, in those years, I have been a welcome member of my Latino family. Being a family member, I have witnessed how my, many of my relatives have achieved their American dream by buying houses, starting business, working for icon American corporations, and most importantly, raising their children. And after all these years, they have become the majority, American citizens. They vote. And so they have, actually, their children have grown up, and they're voting too. And so they have asked me to tell you, "No, reinstate este programa, por favor." Do not restart this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Enright?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright, and I live in Huntwood Drive in Gambrels. I have submitted written testimony, which is being passed out now, in opposition to both Resolution 119 and Resolution 219. I would like to focus my speaking, though, on Resolution 219. In particular, I'm opposed absolutely to the policy set forth in lines 22 through 32, which cover the funding. We Americans are a sharing, caring nation. Since the inception of the Marshall Plan at the end of World War II, we've given away, out of our great bounty, billions and billions and billions of dollars to foreign nations whose people are suffering, oppressed, war-torn. Out of our bounty, we never got a penny of that ourselves. We've given it away. We are a sharing, caring nation. Now, if the themes cited in the lines I cited represent a non-sharing policy of money that we earned from the suffering and misfortune of the individuals we volunteered to hold in our custody, then I'm sorry, the sharing American soul that I cited is in big trouble. As a matter of fact, if this policy goes forward where we're going to keep all the money for ourselves and not share it in representing for extended due process for those people we volunteered to hold in our custody, then I submit that we should send a barge up to the Liberty Island in New York Harbor, dismantle the Statue of Liberty, sell her for scrap, and we can keep all that money, because I don't believe we deserve to display that symbol. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lindell?
Good evening. My name is Danielle Roland Lindell, 913 Poplar Avenue in Annapolis, and I'm here to voice my opposition to Resolution 119. In an opinion piece published in the Capital Gazette on January 19th, Councilmember Volkey claimed that he spent dozens of hours investigating the 287G program thoroughly. One conclusion he drew after this investigation was that it is a fact that 287G is a public safety program. I spent about 30 minutes looking into it. And now, the 287G memorandum of agreement was signed in June of 2017. According to the Maryland Statistical Analysis Center within the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention, the crime rate in Anarundel County has decreased every single year since 2009. 2016, the latest year for which there's data, that year had the lowest crime rate in over 30 years. So if 287G was truly for our safety, why wasn't it signed until 2017? In truth, the 287G program does nothing except turn Anarundel County detention officers into ICE officers at the county's expense. Every person here in the United States, regardless of their immigration status, has rights under the Constitution, and that includes the presumption of innocence until they are proven guilty. The 287G program requires our county to identify persons who have simply been charged with a crime, that ICE claims they have civil immigration violations. I ask, excuse me, being charged with a crime is essentially just an accusation. I ask every council member to consider whether they would want to be imprisoned and forced to work for a dollar a day for the simple fact that they were accused of committing a crime. And I remind the council that it is not a crime to be here in the United States without documentation. Thank you. It is not a crime.
Thank you.
Absolutely not.
Mr. Otten?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Richard Otten. I live on 443 Maple Leaf Drive in the Lockhaven neighborhood of Wedge Water, and I'm here urging you to vote against, vote down, defeat both of these resolutions. Tomorrow afternoon, I teach my first class of the semester at Anarundel Community College, but I do not speak on behalf of the college, I'm just here to speak as an individual. The course is Introduction to American Studies, a class where I teach both, I teach American values and the history of them, including among those values, the critical examination of what our country actually does and the need to speak out against the United States when it's doing un-American things, which is why I'm here. And among the students we serve are the less privileged members of the county, and frankly, have attended meetings where it's been discussed about our need to serve the immigrant communities in our county, and in fact, we need their enrollments. So along with the same forces that would make, perhaps cause people to not trust institution of our police, but also perhaps not lead them to not trust institution of our college. So it's in very much interest to have them. Achieve student success, their goal, and along with students who might be detained themselves for only being charged for a crime, their family members, their community members. It's very important to maintain this. As far as public safety, as the leaders have said, I'd like to teach our students to trust our criminal justice system to properly prosecute people that, a person who is here without proper documentation is no greater fear to the public if they're released on bond than a citizen is. So it really makes no sense whatsoever to say that this 287G program would make us more safe. So please, please urge you to defeat both these resolutions. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I'm Paula Peters. Thank you. My address is 15 McCandry Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland, and I want to incorporate by reference what everyone said that's opposed to 287G, and I won't, I won't waste your time listening, except for one thing. It does make me very sad that we have to start this year for this county government with something so divisive, particularly when it's a resolution, it's not even an ordinance that's been prepared. There's enough acrimony in Washington, I just hate to see it get interjected here on an issue that is such a hot button and that this resolution really is not going to do much about. I practiced law in this city for 38 years. In August, after being horrified by the family separation, I volunteered to go to a family prison in Dilly, Texas. One of my colleagues, who will speak next, was with me. Last month, I spent 10 days in Tijuana at the refugee camp with the poor people that are attempting to immigrate to this country. I want to make sure everybody understands that asylum seekers are not illegal. It is not illegal to appear in this country and ask for asylum. And I, it, I get my back up every time I hear someone that keeps repeating, "Illegal, illegal, illegal." They're not. And the suggestion that it isn't inhibiting to the community to report crime, I'll give you an anecdote, and I'm not sure I can do this without crying, but I tutor reading at a public school, a second grader after school, and I was there waiting to be admitted one day, and there was a teacher, a mom, a translator, and a little child, and the child didn't have a warm coat. And I wanted, was going to go buy the child a coat and take it to him after tutoring, and she wouldn't give me her address and phone number because she was afraid. She was afraid I was going to report her to ICE.
Please summarize.
Okay, I'll save for Ms. Powers to talk about the other issues related to Texas.
Thank you. Before we dismiss this panel, Councilwoman Viller has a question.
Yes. Ms. Lindell, you mentioned the study done at state level. Could you repeat the name of that study, if you don't mind?
Sure. It is actually, it's not a study, it's a collection of data sets that the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention holds, and it's the Maryland Statistical Analysis Center.
And in that data, was it broken down into any kind of categories, whether it be council manic districts or?
It was, you could get it by year, by county, and even within county, it was various numbers of crimes and crime rates broken down by each year.
But not broken down farther within the county?
Not the data set that I looked at, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, this panel is dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Powers, Mr. Jimmy Monack, Ms. Miller, Ms. Frank, Ms. Loudon, and Ms. Bauer. That's the next panel. If you'd come forward. And Ms. Powers, if you're ready to go?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Eileen Powers. I live on Vineyard Road in Annapolis, Maryland. I have lived and practiced law in Anarundel County for 37 years. Although the nature of my practice is land use zoning and property disputes, I had the privilege this August of spending a week volunteering at the South Texas Family Detention Center in the middle- Center in the middle of nowhere, Dilly, Texas, where for seven days, 14 hours a day, I listened to women and children tell their stories of the atrocities they suffered in their home countries in Central America that drove them to escape, of the horrors that they experienced once they crossed the border at the hands of the Border Patrol and ICE officers, days in the icebox, days in the dog cages, and then to Dilly. Baby prison, baby prison is what they call it, the legal staff there calls it. 1,400 women and children in prison in the United States of America. And I am forever changed by that experience. I’m humbled, I’m infuriated, and I’m heartbroken. And so with that in mind, let me tell you, I am strongly opposed to this resolution for three reasons. A, it’s not a good use of county resources to use our limited staff, time, to do the work of ICE. Second, clearly, it has a chilling effect on the residents of Anarundel County, most particularly our most vulnerable populations. And finally, I don’t want the county aiding the illegal, unconstitutional, and frankly immoral acts of ICE. I don’t want racial profiling, I don’t want targeting offenders for minor crimes.
Please summarize.
And I don’t, I don’t want Anarundel County to be a tool in the toolbox of ICE. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Monack?
Hi, Jimmy Monack, 15 McCandry Avenue in Annapolis. I very quickly want to say, I think, the most important piece of information that we heard tonight were the extraordinary math skills of Ms. Pickard’s sixth grader to give us perspective on what we’re actually fighting about, and I want to congratulate her son as a schoolteacher. I’m very proud of him. And not taking up this resolution will be the first step in distancing Anarundel County from a program that literally ripped families apart in our county from men who are currently in Ordinance Road. So it’s time to walk away from this, and if you don’t believe me, just ask a sixth grader. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Hi, my name is Claire Miller. I live at 926 King James Landing Road in Annapolis, Maryland, and I came to testify tonight to oppose Resolution 119. A lot of the reasons that I oppose it have been already talked about, so I’ll just keep it short and sweet. I, one of the reasons why I voted for Stuart Pittman for county executive was because I wanted change to not participate in 287G. So I feel like my voice has been heard, and I urge you to oppose this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frank?
Good evening. My name is Corinne Frank. I live at 8384 Lockwood Road in Pasadena. In a recent discussion on security in our border crisis, President Obama’s Border Patrol Chief, Mark Morgan, was asked, “What is the role of the federal government working with the state, working with the local government?” And his reply was that cooperation is key and that the federal government cannot do this on their own. But let’s move the conversation back to the program itself. The purpose is to recognize serious criminal offenders who have entered the country illegally, and let me stress this, have gone on to be arrested for a separate crime, in a significant percentage of cases, violent crime. Then our county notifies the federal authorities. That’s what the program does, and it is in the interest of public safety. As to the ISGA program, just today, I had a leader in an immigrant community reach out to me to let me know that they would not be able to attend tonight, but that they are very angry that this program was being ended. I was told that anyone within that community overstayed their visa, they would no longer be able to stay within the county, and that probably also the state, and that they would not be here while they awaited a resolution. Most of the people who were housed at the Ordinance Road facility were returned to the community, and this is a disservice to those people as well. Moreover, spending taxpayer money on civil litigation would be highly inappropriate, and I think that that is fairly obvious. Are our schools fully funded? Fire, police? Unless all of the needed and necessary services are fully funded in our community, civil litigation should not even be a discussion. The removal of these programs was not based on good government and has been the result of hastily campaign, made campaign promises by a county executive who did not understand the program at the time of those promises. In some of his campaign comments to his constituents regarding this program, he stated that he would quote, “Not help ICE with its brutal and costly roundup of hard-working Anarundel County residents.” We know that this is a wildly inaccurate characterization at best. I urge you to support these resolutions, and I advocate for the restoration of the process of good government as a priority and not an afterthought.
Ms. Loudon? Thank you.
I think it’s amazing that we have so many of our wonderful citizens of our county here. It proves that we, as citizens, really care about what goes on in our county. Counsel, we are heading in a direction that is not proving that our safety is being taken care of. We are heading toward Montgomery County, where MS-13 has grown to the extent that they are terrorizing the communities in, in Montgomery County. I’m hoping this does not happen to our county. I urge every one of you to vote yes to these resolutions.
Thank you. Ms. Bauer already spoke. I have her on our list so that everyone realizes that. This panel is dismissed. Thank you again. Moving along, Dana Vickers Shelley, Yasmin Jamison, Michael Becker, Robert Smith, Brooke Shandelmeyer, and M. Alexandria Matilia Novak. If you all would come forward, please. And once Ms. Vickers Shelley is seated, you may proceed with your name and address, ma’am. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Dana Vickers Shelley. I’m Executive Director of the ACLU of Maryland. Our address is 3600 Clipper Mill Road, Baltimore, Maryland. We are speaking to make sure this resolution does not pass and move forward. Ending this program, the 287G program, is the first step to re-establishing a relationship with the immigrant community. It’s no longer an attempt to target particular communities and forcing them into the shadows, especially in today’s political climate, where immigrant communities are constantly being attacked by our federal government. We need to protect these neighbors and members of our community. We need to recognize that ending this program could put us back to 2017 in Anarundel County, and we must continue doing more to keep our community safe. We need a trust act we need for Maryland, like Anarundel County itself, to separate itself from ICE. We need to understand that history will judge us for our humanity and for our stance on immigrant rights. Anarundel County is a welcoming county. It houses our state capitol, and Maryland must push forward to be a state that does not bow to the persecution of immigrants. We do not need Resolution 119. We cannot afford to have the 287G program. We hope that under County Executive Pittman’s leadership, the immigrant community and advocates in support of his efforts to protect immigrants can continue to work together to make Anarundel a more welcoming and safe place for everyone to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jamison?
Hi, my name is Yasmin Jamison. I live in Arnold, Maryland. First, I’d like to thank County Executive Pittman for keeping his campaign promise and ending the 287G agreement with DHS. Today, I was just online researching a little bit more about the 287G program and undocumented people living in our country. I found an interesting article from the Washington Post dated June of 2018. It showed two studies. The first study, published by Cato Institute in February, which examined criminal conviction data for 2015 provided by the Texas Department of Public Safety, it actually found that native-born residents were much more likely to be convicted of a crime than immigrants in the country, documented or undocumented. The other study, published in March in the journal Criminology, looked at population-level crime rates. It asked the question, “Do places with higher percentages of undocumented immigrants have higher rates of crime?” The answer was a resounding no. And, I mean, the stuff that I just sent, you can look it up. So it seems to me, the real problem with crime is the native-born residents, and in our county in particular, that would be the white supremacists that are killing our citizens and terrorizing our young children in schools. I would like to know if there’s a program out there to take care of those real problems. It seems to me we should be embracing our undocumented neighbors because the real problem seems to be our native-born citizens. I think that instead of training our law enforcement officers to do ICE’s job, we should train them to do their own jobs. This is a federal issue, let them handle it, and so I would respectfully ask all of you, especially my county Councilwoman, Amanda Viedler, to please vote against these resolutions. I mean, I have a, well, I’m out of time, but I have a good example of what’s happened to somebody.
Please summarize.
A friend of mine was just picked up by ICE, and all, his crime is that he overstayed his visa, and the reason he overstayed his visa is because there’s a backlog.
Thank you.
So he applies for it, and now he’s sitting in detention, losing his job, and, you know...
Thank you, Ms. Jamison.
So...
Yes, thank you. Mr. Becker?
Hi, good evening, almost not quite good morning, I think, but my name is Michael Becker. I’m a new resident to Crofton, Maryland, District Number Seven, and when I say me, when I say new, I mean really new. I just arrived in August. I have never been involved in local politics before in my life, but when I came to this community, I quickly learned about the 287G agreement and knew that I had to get involved. Inspired by District Number Two’s son’s calculator in the back of the room tonight, I did some quick calculations. There is over 3,142 counties or county equivalents in the United States of America, assuming that we subtract out overseas territories. If we divide how many counties have a 287G agreement, we actually get a number that Councilmember Volkey had talked about a couple minutes or hours ago, and that is exactly 2.5% of the United States counties have a 287G agreement. So one of my neighbors here today, testifying before, couched terms in language of almost a sanctuary city if we remove our 287G agreement, and I would say, “No, I disagree with that. This means that we’re firmly extremely normal, joining the 97.5% of American counties.” So I sit here with two purposes in mind. One is to add my voice to the chorus of my neighbors that say the 287G agreement is not needed, my friends and colleagues with the ACLU, those active with CASA, and others. And the second thing is, instead, I want to echo the ideas of Ms. Amy Britt and say, “If this resolution is non-binding, maybe as a community, we need to rethink whether or not we want to allow the unilateral...”
Please summarize.
Yeah, the unilateral power to enter into MOAs with DHS and ICE with one elected official, or if we might want to restructure this. I think that’s something that people on both sides of the debate might be sympathetic to.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Yes, it’s Robert Smith, 1487 Chatham Court, Crofton, Maryland. It was mentioned earlier about, I guess, having a dialogue with both sides, and I guess maybe that’s the thing I want to bring up, is like, can the supporters for 287G really explain to the rest of us what you’re truly trying to achieve with this? Because I don’t understand the public safety aspect of it, because before 287G, what is 287G, it doesn’t matter if you, if, if this whole thing is about preventing violent crime in the state or in, in our community, it’s, if you’re an individual, as a citizen, non-citizen, whatever, you violated the Maryland Code, the Anarundel Code, you’re going to be held here. That’s not going to change whether we have 287G or not. Actually, that’s, to me, that’s the weird logic about this, is if the idea is, we need to, if you’re going to be deporting somebody because they’re violent and deporting them to another jurisdiction which they didn’t commit that crime, you’re actually now endangering that jurisdiction with an individual they have no legal recourse to take against instead of holding them here where they get due process. So I don’t understand the logic that you have with this and wanting to support a program where if you’re saying public safety, it seems to be contrary to that. So can you guys explain to us why a program that you’re trying to tell us is trying to keep us safe is actually, to me, and my, from what I understand, and I’m, I’m a son of a former Secret Service agent, I, I, you know, I’ve had conversations with my father on this, and he explains to me, I asked him very point-blankly, I said, “If you commit a crime in one country and, you know, and if you’re found convicted, you have, you can’t, if you get returned, they don’t have jurisdictions.” He’s like, “Yes.” So, so please explain to me how this is making it safe for people, for our, for any community. So just explain to that to us.
Thank you. Mr. Shandelmeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. My name is Brooks Shandelmeyer. I live in Stone Creek Road in Annapolis, Maryland, and I am absolutely thrilled to be talking about immigration in front of a county council meeting at 10 o’clock at the night, again. So, I am here to testify against this resolution. I want to say that the complaint has been made that Executive Pittman withdrew from this program unilaterally. I would like to point out that executive shoe entered this program unilaterally, so let’s start with that. Now, I have been working in food service for about six years. It is a number, it is an industry that attracts a number of immigrants, documented and otherwise, and one time, one of my colleagues in the bar had, was mugged coming home from work late one evening, and he did not report this incident to the police. He didn’t do this because he did not trust the police at all, and he was more afraid of them than he was of the criminals who attacked him. 287G contributes to this fear of law enforcement in our community, and that is why our chief of police has said the repeal of this program will not impact his duty in any way. And so, on behalf of Oscar, and Amelia, and Delia, and every other people who I have had the privilege of calling my coworkers and my friends, I want to thank Executive Pittman for repealing this program, and I want to urge the rest of the council to vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Novak?
Okay, thank you. My name is Maria Alejandra Matia Novak, and I live in Reva. I’m in District Seven. I would like to add my voice with my neighbors in our disappointment that this resolution has been unwisely brought up and once again divided our community. The 287G program does not work. There have been countless horror stories around the country about how this program leads to racial profiling and disrupts relationships between minority communities and law enforcement. Don’t try to tell me that this is about so-called criminal immigrants. Anybody who has done any reasonable amount of research on this policy can find that it has the exact opposite effect, mostly targeting innocent people and allowing criminals to hide behind victims that are afraid to report. Don’t try to tell me that this is about curtailing illegal immigration when this broken program has too frequently led to racial profiling of Latino citizens, which is a problem for all of us. Although I am Mexican-American, I am not a product of immigration. My family is from the Southwest and has existed there for generations, way before there was a Southern U.S. border. In my family, we say, “We didn’t cross the border, the border crossed us,” and that is the case for millions of Hispanic people living throughout this country. 287G impacts all of us in a negative way. Just last week, a Latino Marine veteran was detained by ICE and threatened deportation until they finally figured out he was a citizen as a result of 287G. A veteran almost got deported. This is racial profiling, and it is racist. Don’t tell me you are not a racist when you vote for racist people and support racist policies. 287G is a racist policy. You can tell me you’re not racist till you’re blue in the face, but I don’t believe you because you support racist policies and your actions speak louder than your words. Now, the other side of your divisive argument is that you don’t even want immigrants to have access to affordable, legal representation, knowing full well access to that representation would ease their struggles. So I would just like to ask Councilwoman Volkey how he plans in the future to help us solve solutions instead of creating struggles for our neighbors.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Mr. Tim Hallahan, Brenda Witrobe, Rachel Adams, Pauline Elliott, Dana Vickers Shelley, and Pedro Herrera Svidia.
Dana Vickers Shelley already spoke.
Oh, okay.
So she doesn't need to come back up.
Okay, then Mark Baskerville is the last speaker.
She was in Room 36.
Mr. Hallahan, as long as you're ready, name and address in two minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to urge you to support Resolutions 119 and 219. The county executive's decision to withdraw from participation in the federal 287G program was both hasty and ill-advised. The fact that it was, we were with, the draw was effective one day after its inauguration, I offer as proof that more forethought could have possibly been beneficial. I want to thank Councilman Volkey for the research that he's done and for introducing these resolutions to allow this discourse to take place this evening and other times earlier this month. Without the resolution and his actions and research, I think probably this would have gone on, or the council, the county executive's decision would have gone unnoticed. Mr. Volkey, Mr. Volkey's research has disclosed that there are gaps between the previous programs, the Safe Communities Act and the Criminal Alien Program, that 287G address. One example is the fingerprints, people that have come in without inspection, there are no fingerprints in the system to be compared to, so the live scan means nothing. The interview is the critical part that helps to identify people who have committed additional crimes in addition to be here as, being here as undocumented persons. It's about the rule of law, it's not about racism, and I, I support these resolutions and urge you to vote in support of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenda Witrobe?
Yes, good evening, council members. My name is Brenda Winchrod, 1140 Neptune Place in Annapolis. I'm the Political Action Chair of the Anarundel Branch of the NAACP. I am here this evening representing our branch President Jaclyn Boone Alsop. The NAACP of Anarundel County opposes this Resolution 1-19 and fully supports the county executive's December 28 action to end the 287G program. In a recent opinion piece, one councilman hailed the 287G program as an instrument of public safety. We disagree. Any legislation that facilitates screening an individual based on their county of origin can become an instrument of discrimination. Discriminatory practices do not create public safety. It create, they create a public insecurity, and this is what makes communities unsafe. The 287G program is an administrative redundancy. The U.S. Office of the Inspector General has consistently reported, as recently as September 2018, that the 287G program continues to be poorly monitored and lacks competent federal oversight. Council members, true public safety, we believe, is derived from a community's economic security, and there are a wide range of unsettled economic injustices that need your immediate attention, far ahead of doing the work of the Department of Homeland Security. A recent United Way study revealed that one-third of Anarundel County residents cannot afford basic necessities. According to 2017 census estimates, 6.1 percent of Anarundel County residents are earning poverty wages while the median income continues to increase above national levels. Healthcare costs continue to burden local families, and last but certainly not least...
Please summarize.
I will. Hate symbols and hate speech are occurring, occurring in our school systems at an alarming rate, infringing on the civil rights of a safe and equal education for all. Positive educational experiences and outcomes generate economic, generate economic security. Thank you. We urge you to oppose this resolution.
Ms. Adams?
Good evening, council. My name is Rochelle Adams. I reside in Millersville, Maryland, and I'm here to really tell a story, but I am here in opposition to Resolutions 119 and 219. I am obviously a voter, but I have been a resident of the county for almost 10 years, and I also come from a very serviced background, family in military in all aspects. But I'd like to talk about one particular woman that I have been made very aware of that I have a very close connection to, and her name is Veronica Castro. Veronica Castro is a wife of a U.S. Army veteran who was actually disabled during, during his service. She serves as the primary caretaker for him and their four U.S. citizen children, including one who was born with cerebral palsy. Due to the current broken immigration system, she is not able to adjust her status and remains undocumented and fighting a deportation case. Veronica is actually one of the lucky ones. She is a member of CASA and her local church and was actually able to get connected with free legal services. If our immigration system was functional, this case would not have been an issue for Ms. Veronica, nor for her family. So Veronica now would have been able to adjust her status to get on her path to citizenship, but our system is broken, and I don't see a path towards a comprehensive fixed, fix coming out of Washington anytime soon, and my husband is furloughed, so I know how that feels. In the meantime, our county should not be helping to deport people like Veronica. If anything, we should be doing everything to welcome her and support her through legal counseling and social support so that she can continue to care for her family and help them thrive.
Thank you.
I thank you for opposing Resolutions 119 and 219.
Ms. Elliott?
Pauline Elliott, Pasadena. I didn't come prepared with the speech because I work better on the seat of my pants. I am for keeping 287G in the county. It's not ever been a problem until now. I, I'm, I, I have more of a dislike for the way that Stuart Pittman was so sneaky about it, that he was sneaky, and that he just decided to, to, to do it just like that. And it has brought a lot of opposition to this county, and this county, I know we can go into the whole world and DC and everything, but our county has so much to offer that we have to keep our county safe. Our county is growing by leaps and bounds, so much that we are considering leaving the county. We have a school that's going up at the end of my street, and I've, every time I look up there, I see a city. So that tells me that we're getting ready to bust at the seams. We already broken the seams. We need to keep every single person, even if it's one person, safe. My son is from, he lives in Harford County, and when he first moved there, he was scared to death to be up there. It was where he could afford to live. But when they put this program into action in Harford County, he feels like he's made the right decision because he's not afraid. The system's working. It works. This program works, and it has been working. It's been working in Anarundel County. If we can save one person from anything, any violent crime, the smartest kids, the not-so-smart kids, they need to, they need to be safe.
Please summarize.
I have a three-year-old grandson, and I worry about this. I worry about the safety of him, and we as a, we as a whole, I mean, you all are voters too, we need to, we need to, to keep with this program.
Thank you. Pedro Herrera Saavedia, last call. Mark Baskerville?
Hi, I'm Mark. Allen? Hi, I'm Mark Baskerville with Maryland Campaign for Liberty here, speaking on behalf of our Anarundel Network, who is in favor of 287G. First off, I just want to point out, I'm glad to see that I think most people in the room are unified on concern of how our tax dollars are spent, so, which I think is actually the root cause of most division, is when government is doing way too much and people are having their tax dollars taken and being spent on things they don't want. So just to preface my remarks, don't raise taxes anymore, don't expand government enterprises into things that the, that free enterprise should be doing, and that'll prevent a lot of division and promote more peaceful, prosperous society. So on the rule of law standpoint, with 287G, I just want to point out kind of the obvious underlying idea here is that fear of deportation is a natural consequence of illegally immigrating, as is fear of punishment for breaking any other laws, which is kind of how the rule of law is supposed to function. So I do kind of like the idea of moving this decision over to the legislature and not being something that county executives can unilaterally impose or repeal. And just want to point out the idea of incentives in addition to the public safety argument. Again, you know, fear of deportation is an incentive not to illegally immigrate, and there's also further incentive not to commit crimes for people who have already illegally immigrated by having a clear signal that there will be consequences for doing so. So, out of time, thanks.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Take the next three, Ms. Ella Moistale, Mr. Tim Walters, and Mr. Frederick Robinson, if you'd please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ella Moistale. I attend Severna Park Middle School. Amanda Fiedler, I am one of your constituents. I am grateful for this opportunity tonight. It is so refreshing to see a majority of women. As good role models for me, I am asking you to represent me, my values of loving everybody no matter where they come from. First, I would like to say I'm against Councilman Volkey's resolution. As you all should know, immigrants commit far fewer crimes than native-born citizens. In fact, the top 10 places with the largest immigrant increase in America all had lower levels of crime in 2016, a New York Times study showed, concluded. And a recent study from the Conservative Cato Institute found that the rate of crime by immigrants is significantly lower than the U.S.-born citizens. 287G does not keep our communities safer. It instills fear in immigrants who are simply trying to have a better life. I am scared to go to school every day. However, this is due to gun violence, definitely not immigrants. In addition, I would like to remind the council of the 103 men that are hosted by our county at Ordnance Road today. Those of you with similar values to me, compassion, tolerance, and tolerance for all, should be as concerned as I am about what happens to them. Next, none of them have committed big crimes, and some of them are simply there because they cannot afford to pay bail. You were all, you all were elected on an agenda of change, so I ask, how will you show this in the next 90 days to these men when ICE will take them to a county much less nicer than ours? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walters?
Hi, my name's Tim Walters. I'm from Lenthicam, up North County, so I'm here in support of the resolution. You guys took an oath to your charter, the state constitution, and the federal constitution. You did that because those three work together. They're not isolated, and they're not independent of one another. In fact, the federal gives the power to everybody else. You have an obligation to work with those folks. In the beginning, you guys passed the bill for the grant from the DOJ, so you're not adverse to that. You did it right here tonight. This is no different. We have a lot of facts to choose from, but there's a lot of emotions. All three of those documents are there to keep the emotion out of this. In fact, I would argue emotionally, I heard that, that this program will support this because everybody's in fear of it. When you're in fear, you behave more, you stay off the radar. That ultimately supports the program. That's what I heard overwhelmingly tonight. People are afraid of it. It creates fear. Okay? If you're illegal, and this is the other challenge we have, you're here illegally. You're going to be fearful, as the Maryland for Liberty gentleman said. That's a natural byproduct of having broken one crime. The other challenge is, this program only focuses on people who have broken a second crime and ended up in prison or detention center. Now, fingerprints, as we've heard, if you're here illegally, you have no fingerprints. There's no bias in prison. If you're getting your interview and you don't have a fingerprint and we can't prove where you're at, that's going to trigger a process. That's not racist. That's simply a process. We need to continue this to work with our partners at the fed level, they have the entire country, they count on state and county partners, just like we count on them to help us with education and other things. These things, again, are not separate. I'd ask you to consider this, take the emotion out, see what your role is, if it's there, do it, if it's not, don't, but follow that and not the rhetoric and the emotion in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Frederick Robinson, Severna Park. Councilman Volkey, apologize, only have two thumbs, but two thumbs up for your part, for your initiation, and your involvement in follow this. Congresswoman Hare, thank you about two and a half hours ago, maybe three hours, I'm not sure what time it is, for the questions that you had for the previous speakers, which brought focus and clarity to key points. Thank you. To all the council members, thanks for all this, and for all the people who showed up. Thank you very much. I support, I lost track, 287G. Thank you. I urge you to vote, I yield reminder of my time.
Thank you. The panel is dismissed. I think you came up after, but if, if you could stay, if you three could get up, if there's, this the last call, if there's anybody else who'd like to speak, this will be it. We have the chairs. And then we'll work our way over. If you state your name and address, you may begin while they're taking a seat.
My name is Leah Fraser, and I'm a District Seven resident. I'm an immigrant. I've worked with immigrants in my capacity as a president of the Asian Pacific American Bar Association of the Washington DC area. I'm married to a veteran who served in Afghanistan, who is the son of immigrants, and my in-laws are first-generation immigrants. This issue is extremely important to me for those reasons. First of all, I think it's interesting that we're here, maybe a few weeks after we exited the 287G program, there hasn't been any, there hasn't really been any study about how it's affected the county, and this, I think, is a very reactionary move. Second of all, people should stop calling the people who this program affects illegal immigrants. Their status has yet to be adjudicated, and even if they are in detention, it does not mean that they have actually committed a crime. We have due process, and they get to stand trial, and a jury gets to determine that. Finally, I would like to ask whether anyone bothered to read the September 2018 report issued by the Department of Homeland Security's Office of Inspector General that, that said that the program is actually ineffective right now, and so I think it's kind of questionable that we would be rallying to remain in an ineffective program. The title of the report says, "Lack of Planning Hinders Effective Oversight and Management of ICE's Expanding 287G Program." This isn't a headline from, you know, a progressive news source, this is actually coming straight from DHS OIG, which actually investigated the effectiveness of the program. Here are some headlines or headers from the, the actual report. One, the 287G program did not base its request for additional program management on an analysis of program needs. The 287G program managers have difficulty fulfilling their responsibilities. Program managers reporting, the reporting structure creates confusion.
Please summarize.
Yes, so I urge you, Councilman Volkey, to take a look at the report and to, to ask yourself why you think we should remain in a program that is ineffective.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Thank you. My name is CJ Musaw. I'm here from 3884 Ponder Drive, Edgewater, Maryland, or Mayo, Maryland, as I prefer to call it, 21037. to call it, 21037. It's great to see you again. It's here. I really appreciate the democratic process, and I sincerely appreciate our ability to put forth a resolution that reflects, you know, what we're hearing from some folks. So, I just wanted to say I'm grateful to be here, no matter what hour it is. I'm here speaking on behalf of Showing Up for Racial Justice, Annapolis and Anarundel County. We're a group of folks who are socialized white in this society, and we work to accountably follow and support community of color-led organizations working towards racial justice. We don't normally say our name. We prefer to just show up in honor of other folks who have asked us to show up, but today I think it's important. We've had a lot of talks about safety tonight, and I wanted to lift up that as I'm learning more and more about my own socialization as a white person, I'm learning that a lot of the things that we have fear about are based on race-based myths. I am far more likely to fall victim of a crime from a person who is also socialized as white in this country and in this county, and indeed in this room. I'm far more likely to be befallen a victim walking to my car from someone in this room who is also socialized as white. We, I want to echo what Representative of the Anarundel County NAACP said here tonight, Ms. Wintraud. We have some extremely important economic disparities that I think everybody here tonight could be focusing on together, marching together on, rather than be pulled apart on a largely political issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the county council. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. My name is Concepcion Morales. I live in 101 Baltimore Avenue in Glen Burnie. I'm here to oppose Resolution 119 and 219. I lived in Glen Burnie for the last 18 years. By the way, I feel safe without this program. The 287G program has serious fears of racial profiling and worries among immigrant people. It will prevent immigrant community from calling police in times of need because won't trust police, and will make the immigrant communities vulnerable. I am an immigrant. I've been here for like 20 years, like I said, 18 years in this community, in this county, and I feel safe without this program. I work in construction, and I witnessed a situation in Baltimore City where a contractor, they labor, workers pay their labors, they decide not to pay to the workers. The workers, they have the opportunity to go to the police department and make an official complaint, not getting paid. Do you guys think in Anarundel County, they have this program, those workers will come to the police department and file a complaint? I don't think so, because it will not be that bridge, it will not be that connection, will not trust them. Why would they? As a father of three childrens, I feel my immigrant community, because the fear of not coming home is real, and having this program will-
Please summarize, sir.
...increment the fear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Christopher Jimenez-Brodnik. I am here against this resolution for the simple fact that I urge that the leadership in this council really consider getting behind our county executive pitman in using those spare 130 beds for treatment addiction. If we're talking about public safety, the opioid epidemic is causing the crime rate to increase in this county. There's more home invasions, there's more car robberies, we have people under the influence of opioids driving on our county roads, and so using those beds for treatment is not only a humanitarian thing, but we're also decreasing the crime in our county, and I urge this council to really strongly consider getting behind that as far as that goes, and continue making Anarundel County the best damn county out of the 24 to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Neil Segal, Davidson, Will, Maryland. As a son of immigrants, as a first-generation American with a foreign face, the rule of law in the United States does not play race. There's no xenophobiaism, there's no racism when it comes to rule of law. You, as our legislative body, should not take any tool out of your toolbox to safeguard the residents of this county, and I urge you to do your duty and uphold 287G 1-19 and 2-19. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other movement in the audience, we're going to close the public hearing. This panel is dismissed. If we can have the admin come back up if there's any last-minute questions. Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution 119 and Resolution 219.
Okay, we only vote on one at a time.
I'm sorry?
Only vote on one at a time.
No, I know that, but we're reading both.
Resolution 119, Resolution Requesting the County Executive to Enter Into an Agreement with the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement on behalf of Anarundel County to perform certain immigration enforcement functions pursuant to Section 287G of the Immigration and Nationality Act. Resolution 219, I believe we need to vote on one-
Okay, we'll do one at a time. 119, any comments, questions? I see a few lights go on. Mr. Volkey, we'll have you go first, and then Ms. Hare.
No, sorry, I was just going to move it.
Okay, Ms. Hare?
Sorry, do I address my comments now or when I make my vote?
You could do now.
Either one? Okay. Sorry. I would like to thank everyone for coming here this evening. I would like to thank anyone who emailed me, who gave a phone call, who gave their input on this issue. We have seen that it is divisive, there are strong opinions on each side, but I will say that I did attend the town hall at Southern High School, and the conversation was firm but civil, and I appreciate that kind of discourse in the public. That was, that was great to see. I personally have also done quite a bit of research on this issue so that I could make an informed vote. I have listened to everyone who has emailed or called. I have hopefully responded to almost all of you, if not all of you. I have visited two different detention centers. I've visited the Jennifer Road Detention Center. I also visited the one in Hartford County. I have interviewed a number of detention center officers. I have interviewed the records clerk at the Jennifer Road Detention Center. I have reviewed the written testimony from our sheriff. I have spoken with the sheriff from Hartford County. And I am seeing and I am understanding from the data that 287G is effective as a tool in the toolbox, among other tools that we have, to help prevent repeat crimes in the community in particular. I've heard a couple of people say today that we should base policy on data, and I agree with that. So, I would like to at least touch on a few of the facts and data points that I see coming out of this and the process by which we got here. So, here are the, a few facts at least that I believe are key. From my conversations with the detention officers, trained 287G officers prioritize the care, custody, and control of inmates over any other 287G responsibilities. The police have no involvement in the 287G program. We've heard that a number of times from our police chief. In 2018, up until the program was ended on December 4th, there were 193 people screened as part of this program. Those 193 people had already been arrested and charged with a crime independent of any immigration status, and I think that's important because this program is a commentary on those people who have already been arrested and charged with a crime, not a commentary on independent, on immigration status in and of itself. Of those 193 people, 69 of them were here without authorization. Of those 69, over half were charged with a violent crime, and as we've heard, that did not include those charged with DUI or DWI. Since December 4th, when the program was ended, the records department at Jennifer Road Detention Center has notified ICE in 13 instances of people who were charged with a crime, who also self-reported as foreign-born pursuant to the Criminal Alien Program. However, according to the officials I spoke to at the Jennifer Road Detention Center, ICE has not interviewed a single one of those 13 people. In at least some cases, it's because by the time they were notified, the person in question was already out on bail and no longer in the care, custody, and control of the Jennifer Road Detention Center. Lastly, the county auditor has allocated approximately, I believe, $27,000 per year to the county from the detention center budget, if you will. And I mention these facts because they contradict much of the stated rationales for ending the program in our county executive's report. Our county executive offered three reasons for terminating the program, and we've heard some of those reasons here tonight. Now, I am also concerned that his report was issued after terminating the program. I would like to see a program evaluated and then a decision on the termination of the program made based on that evaluation, not the other way around. The three rationales that were offered, the first one is fear in the community, the second one is redundancy, and the third one is this administrative burden, so I'd like to touch on each of those briefly. We have heard from our police chief and from others tonight, and in emails, that fear in the community is real. I do not intend to diminish anyone's concern about that fear, and we need to address that fear as a community. I wholeheartedly agree. We have heard from our police chief that they are making great strides in that fashion, that they do community outreach to that effect. I applaud your efforts in that regard. I would love to see that continue. I think we should double down on those efforts if at all possible. However, since the police are not involved in this program, any fear of the police is either premised on misinformation about this program or it stems from some other place. Again, we must combat that fear, and that can and should include education, community outreach, but ending this program, a program that the police are not in, they're not involved in at all, cannot alter a fear of the police. Additionally, the second rationale for ending the program given by the administration, which is redundancy, undercuts its first rationale, which is fear. If the program is truly redundant, then the same alleged fear in the community does not go away with the ending of this program. And that actually points to one of my frustrations about the process by which we got here. This rationale, this ending of the program, was not based on data. It was not based on information that may or may not even be available. I have asked for data demonstrating fear in the community, perhaps by a decrease in crimes reported or a decrease in available witness testimony on cases and whatnot from the police, et cetera. I have been told that that data is not collected, so we know, or that it can't be collected. So, we know that that information was, was not evaluated by our county executive in making this decision. So, what else can I look to? I look to the numbers on this program. Under the CAP, the people I spoke with at Jennifer Road note that the records department has discretion to notify ICE when an individual self-reports as foreign-born. That notification can be delayed for many hours in some instances, and as I mentioned, of the 13 people ICE was notified about under the CAP program in the last six weeks, not one of them was interviewed. Three received detainers based on information previously obtained by ICE, but the remaining 10 were never interviewed and no action was taken on that. And then, like I said, in some instances, those interviews were not possible because the individual in question was no longer in custody of the detention center. So, as Mr. Martin mentioned earlier, the program evaluations are the same. It's the same data used, it's the same process. But even if we assume that all of the same individuals self-report as foreign-born and that records department notifies ICE for every one of them, the key difference here is the timeframe. The timeline for sending the information to ICE versus telling a detention officer within the detention center under the 287G is a much slower process and in some instances restricts ICE's ability to conduct interviews. In that regard, not only is the 287G program more efficient, but there are individuals who are not being interviewed under the CAP who would be receiving interviews under the 287G program. As to the administrative burden, the administration's statements are somewhat at odds with the data. We have heard from the administration that the detention center is understaffed and this program is draining. However, we've also heard that the detention officers themselves do not believe a program, that the program is a distraction from their duties. In fact, each detention officer I spoke to affirmatively stated that the care, custody, and control of individuals in the detention center takes precedence, and that if duties conflict, the 287G work is put on hold. While, at the same time, the detention officers do agree that the facilities are understaffed, they have also stated to me that the understaffing is unrelated to and is not affected by the 287G program. Again, we must address that understaffing, but ending the 287G program will not do that. The county auditor has attributed the roughly $27,000 in cost for the program annually, based on the average time it takes to interview an individual under the program and complete the necessary paperwork multiplied by the salary information. However, that $27,000 is paid to the detention officers, whether they're performing the 287G duties or not. The money is being spent regardless. In that sense, we're really attributing a fraction of each officer's salaries to 287G. And it looks to me, by the numbers, that if you do multiply the 193 times three hours, and then you divide that by the 12 officers, and you allocate 50 hours, 50 weeks a year at 40 hours, assuming two weeks vacation, I also get roughly 2.4% of time. In that regard, there's really no budget savings by canceling the program. Now, I agree, the administration has identified two significant problems in our county that need to be addressed: fear of the police and staffing shortages in our detention center. But an objective review of the operation of the 287G program has demonstrated to me that the administration's actions to end the 287G program are not related to either identified problem and will not alleviate either identified problem. In that regard, I would have liked to have seen a more thorough evaluation and report on the program prior to its termination, particularly since the data reviewed in the last six weeks demonstrates what I see to be as a few holes. I make these comments based on the data. I make these comments based on the fact that these individuals were arrested and charged with a separate crime, and I sincerely hope that my comments are not taken as anything else. But I do think that for these reasons, the program should be reinstated, and the county executive can certainly conduct a more thorough evaluation of the program at that time. Thank you.
Ms. Raviyan?
I just wanted to make some comments about all the testimony. I also want to say thank you to everyone that came and testified this evening. Obviously, everyone's very passionate about this issue. I especially want to thank members of the immigrant community who came here, because your stories are very important and valuable to this conversation, and thank you for contributing those. I just want to start with a little reference to history, and this is something you may have learned about in history class. There was a boat, a passenger boat, that was coming to the United States looking for a place to bring refugees before World War II called the MS St. Louis. And that boat was looking, these were people that were, this is a boat of Jewish people that were looking for a safe place to go before World War II broke out, and the United States would not take those people, Canada would not take those people on that boat, and many of those people ended up returning to Europe and died in the Holocaust. I'm not trying to make equations of, you know, exact equations of the situations of many of our immigrants, but if you learn about the stories of the difficult challenges that many of immigrants faced in their home countries, you will find that many of them are escaping, you know, horrible danger, horrible violence, extreme circumstances, and if you are curious to read more, I'm going to recommend a book called Enrique's Journey, and it chronicles the story of a young man who was coming to the United States looking for his mother from Honduras, and it's unbelievable, the things that this young man faced. I bring all of this up because I think if there's one thing we can all agree on in this room is that our immigration system in the United States is horribly, horribly broken. There is, I've heard many people mention that we welcome immigrants, we want them to go through the legal path. If you're not familiar with the challenges facing someone wanting to go through the legal path, you need to investigate it. I have family members who have been adopted into my family, informally, not legally adopted, who've gone through this process, and it literally can take five years, a decade, or more to legally immigrate through the process. I have an adopted brother who may not have, he was lucky to survive- I have an adopted brother who may not have, he was lucky to survive from the violence that was going on in his home country, and he risked his life by going through the process the way it currently stands. I fully respect and understand someone wanting to take their chances and come to the border and ask for asylum. That's extremely difficult to do right now. We have an administration that's discouraging people from following that path and trying to push people away that have very legitimate asylum claims. All of this boils down to, we have a climate that's very hostile to immigrants right now, and we nonetheless have people who have legitimate claims for asylum to be in the United States. And as a county government, I'm sort of amazed that we're even talking about this because I see this as, you know, I believe that we should cooperate with the federal government, but cooperation and doing the job of the federal government are not the same thing. And I believe that we need to keep federal duties in the federal government and cooperate where we are asked, not do those jobs for the federal government. At the end of the day, when we're talking about over 40 vacancies in the Detention Center, strictly looking at this from a personnel issue, we should not be assigning additional duties to our detention officers who are already stretched very, very thin. So I hope that for all of those reasons, you understand that I will vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Rodvian. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank everyone who came here tonight to testify. I think we did an exceptional job at speaking and being civil and respectful. I know that that hasn't happened on all conversations regarding this topic, so I think if you spoke, you should give yourself a little pat on the back. I too have received over 1,300 emails. I have attended or viewed both town halls. I have researched 287G as well. There are compelling arguments on both sides, but my job sitting here is to wade through the emotion because I'm going to have four years of hearing testimony on different pieces of legislation, and it's my job to get to the facts before I cast my vote. Regarding this being a federal issue, under both Republican and Democratic presidencies, 287G was carved out specifically for local government to partner with the federal government, making it both federal and local issues. I've heard a lot about the concern over crime in the community not being reported because of fears. The police department does not go into homes searching for illegal immigrants. There are no raids remotely similar to this. Chief Altamari has stated numerous times, "If you are in trouble and you call the police, we will come." It was also stated at both town forums that the concern and fear in the immigrant community towards our police department is not solely based on 287G, that immigrants come to our country with fears established from their home countries. And there is no way, because no data has been provided, no study has been done, to separate or differentiate where that fear comes from. We have heard from our own sheriff in Anarundel County, as well as surrounding county, that this program is working. One of the questions that I continue to go back on is a statement made that a well-known gang uses 287G to spread fears, to harass, and to gain money from the immigrant community. I often wonder, are they so fearful of this program because they know it works? I don't know the answer to this because, again, we don't have a study on this information. I don't want to send any criminal from any organized gang into my community or to an immigrant community. The community does not matter to me. I don't want to send anybody like this back to that community to repeat offend. 34 is a large number when you're talking about violent crimes. Five is a large number to me. I have a lot of questions that could have been answered by a more extensive report that wasn't so hastily done, and for that reason, I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lacy.
I think in part because the discussion this evening has been about both resolutions, I'll offer comments that go to both resolutions. First, my colleagues and the members of our current panel, you all heard what I had to say at our work session last week. I stand by everything that I said at that time, and I feel it just as strongly now as I did then. Although I have listened very closely to everything that was said tonight, I've made a few notes. Nothing that was said as to the substance has altered my view, but I have, and would like to reiterate particularly for the audience that we have today, strengthened my view as to the importance of the procedures that we follow in arriving at decisions that impact people's lives and public policy, which is in part what we do. But there was agreement on both sides, even just this evening, recognizing that the county council does not have the legal authority to compel our county executive to enter into this agreement with 287G or to get out of it. And if neither side is particularly happy about that, then I suggest we keep up the overall momentum of public discussion and work to do, to take the steps that would be needed to shift the balance of power between our legislative and executive branches in our county government. That is the only option. And I think that's really the only additional point. And I want to commend Mr. Martin for the work that he's done, and I think the point that he made at the very beginning of this discussion about ICE's explanation for how we as a county mayor may not choose to use funds that we have received from the program is very well taken. And while I also think, to make lemonade out of all this time that we've all spent here, I appreciate my colleague, Councilwoman Volkey's sincere desire to raise the level of discourse in this county about these types of significant decisions. And I agree that this discussion didn't receive enough attention back when our prior county executive decided to enter into the 287G agreement. However, unfortunately, now, because apparently someone, some number of people within the federal government are so disgusted by the idea that we might choose, might choose, to use some funds that we've received through this program to support legal services providers who could actually expedite detainees' process through the legal system that we're keeping them in, that bothers them so much that they want to pull out of our program, pull out of these agreements. To me, really shows you what this is really all about. And as to the second resolution, from a process standpoint, which my perspective will always be, here's a clue for the next four years. I always care about the procedure before the substance. That's the way I'm wired, and I'll tell it to anybody over and over again, until you understand. That's just the way I'm wired. If we don't have the authority to do something, we don't need to be talking about it. We should be talking about how do we get the authority to do that act that we want to take. And that was the problem with the Personhood Resolution, it's still the problem here today. And as to the substance, the thing is, we'll all be more satisfied with the outcome of the substance, whatever that is, if we can agree that we went through a procedure that was fair and in which everybody was heard. And to me, that was the most valuable thing that came out of tonight, and I appreciate the people who pointed out that we had an election, that these issues were part of the public discourse before the election, that candidates said what their views were, and the people who were paying attention voted, and we know what those results were. And out of my respect for county executive Pittman, the process that he went through in coming to his decision, then I am also intending to vote against both resolutions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just neglected to address the second resolution. If you go on our, if you Google "civil charges" in Anarundel County, there is a list of charges, from stalking to trespassing. No one has provided legal assistance for any of those charges. So I do not support using taxpayer dollars to support any legal funds for any civil charges for anyone. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, may I respond just on that one point? I just wanted to clarify that as to the legal funds, the usage of legal funds that I understood and to which I am speaking refers only to the immigration portion and nothing else. And I think it's an important distinction that needs to be made, although it's rather moot at this time, I also would decline to make some sort of pledge on how to use monies when a budget hasn't been put before us. But I wanted to make it clear, that's the specific piece I'm talking about. I'm quite well aware of what legal resources are provided for people who have committed crimes or have civil legal issues through my own participation in those systems as an attorney. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pickard.
Yes, and in the spirit of time and the state of my colleague next to me, I'm going to be very brief. I'll be voting no on both of these resolutions for many of the reasons that were said tonight. Ms. Amy Britt, I could have used your statement here tonight. Resolutions like this frustrate me because they've taken a lot of county council time, and this resolution tonight, no matter how the vote goes down, has absolutely no weight going forward. The second resolution regarding how this county spends its funds and making pledges about hypothetical budgets, I will vote on the budget when the budget is before me in May and June. So, end of story. And I'll refer to my brilliant sixth graders' statistics. I care about public safety, I care about all of public safety, and with our competing needs in this county, we need to be very clear with how we use our resources, both in every aspect of public safety. So thank you for your time, Mr. Martin. I learned a great deal when I was touring the Detention Center. I don't know that I want to hang out with you there, but I was also, I'm still processing, to be honest. You know, my children pointed out that we're spending a lot of time talking about these 34 people and their immigration status, and I walked by the cell where Mr. Ramos is being detained, and I don't think I'll ever forget it. And as far as I know, he's a U.S. citizen, so I'll never, ever forget that. So I'll be voting no, even though my vote really doesn't matter because nothing's going to happen after these votes take place. So good night, everybody. Thank you for your present, your testimony, and everybody was very well behaved. Well done.
Mr. Tyler, I know you've been quiet there, but I do have a question for you. Where in the Anarundel County Charter that it says it's the responsibility of this legislative body to deal with immigration?
I don't believe anywhere.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, you have served under both Republican and Democratic county executives. How many years have you been in the correction facility?
Forty-nine years, sir.
And obviously, I've been through several budgets. This is my second term on the council, and I like to listen to people who've been there and have advice. Do you believe these resolutions would help or hinder, what's your honest opinion about, you know, supporting the program, from your experience under Democrat, Republican, and the correction facility?
As I've testified, I really don't think that the 287G adds anything to the system itself. I think the Criminal Alien Program, that's been around for a long time, and particularly in Anarundel County for 14 years, never heard a peep negative about it, really didn't hear it one way or the other. So it certainly appeared as though it was doing its job as it should have been doing. And the other side of it is, who should be doing these federal duties and responsibilities? They're the responsibilities of the federal ICE agents and not the responsibilities, in my opinion, of local correctional officers.
Thank you. I appreciate all the time you've taken with us, with your staff, and I'll just finish with this. I did try to respond to every email and call. I just found it quite ironic, the same people that don't want the federal government involved and government involved at all now want ICE involved with the government. So your same argument to say that you want the government, there's no logic. Again, the federal government should be paying and dealing with what's there. Again, that's my opinion, and I think we need to take a vote. So Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 119.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
No.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
No.
Ms. Pickard.
No.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Peruski.
No.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Resolution 119 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 219.
I'm going to read in Resolution 219 first.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Resolution 219, "Resolution urging the county executive not to use funds received by Anarundel County from the federal government pursuant to an intergovernmental service agreement for the legal representation of county detainees and civil proceedings instituted by the Department of Homeland Security and pledging not to approve any related budgetary requests."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please call the roll on Resolution 219.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
No.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
No.
Ms. Pickard.
No.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Peruski.
No.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Resolution Number 219 is defeated.
Other businesses, is there any other business to be brought in for the county council this evening? May I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstention. County council is adjourned until February 4th, 2019. Thank you.